Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Littleton. We're a department goal review. I want to thank everybody for coming here. It's very -- I'm a little bit intimidated. I won't lie. It's very impressive to see all of you here. I think we're -- I feel very lucky to have you. I know some of you better than others, but I'm consistently impressed with everybody's professionalism and everybody's expertise in their areas, and I want to just thank you all very much for that. And I want to thank Anthony for coordinating this. This is definitely the biggest meeting I've been to. And I'm going to basically just -- so I would only say, the point of this, I think, when we originally set it up was so that as the select board goes into our goal-setting session, we understand where all of you are coming from, from your departments, and what you want to do. And that is the -- that is my desire to get out of this, is to make sure that what we do aligns and what you do aligns with us. And that's all I have. So, you want to take it away, Anthony?
Yeah, excellent. Well said, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Yeah, we're pleased. I think this is something that the boards wanted to happen, and I'm glad that this year that we're actually getting to do this, and hopefully it helps the board in developing your goals. The way that we have the room structured is this is how we have our department head meetings. And we like the way our department heads meet because they're very interactive, and we often comment on each other's as we go around the table. Some people comment on everybody's mark. But that's what makes it fun. You know, we actually get to collaborate a lot and work off of each other, and we all have good ideas, and it's good to share those ideas with each other. So, what we're going to do is we have a mic that we're going to pass around the table, so when the department heads will give their update on their goals, and I'll display them up on the TV for everybody. And then if there's questions, and department heads feel free if you want to add something or something that maybe your department is not thinking about. I think it's a great opportunity to do that. So with that, Alicia was smart enough to say, "I want to be first in out," so she's going to get the hot mic first. We're going to start with our finance department.
No, you just talk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Select Board and fellow colleagues. Finance combined with Treasury for our goals, since we're in the same office, and we go hand in hand. It'll be me and Sean presenting our goals tonight. First goal is hiring a new financial analyst to reconcile grants and act as a backup and an assistant. So, the reason for that is it will help us with better efficiencies when the office, everyone's kind of pigeonholed in their one area. And so we want to have somebody that can actually learn different aspects and help within both departments. In case there's any people that want to take vacations or time off, it's not just that one person that knows that role. There's more than one. And at the same time, I'll be training my assistant to further do things that I do, which will help the town. Some process improvement opportunities and streamlining processes and controls between Treasury, Human Resources, Accounting, and the schools. We're going to look further into the controls for general operations as well as payroll operations. We want to do more automation and less manual. A lot of the things we do is manual, and if we can cut it down and get it automated, that frees up our time to do more important things that we need to do within Finance and Treasury. We would like to streamline the budget process for departments in a -- with a more user-friendly, transparent budget document. We're looking more at online software. There are different ones that are out there that we could integrate, that we could use, that would allow the citizens to kind of drill in, look at specific things, allow the town administrator to drill in and look at things, instead of having to wait for us to produce a PDF document. It's just more interactive, and we've been seeing more and more cities and towns going in that direction for the future, and we want to kind of approach it the same way.
One of the softwares that we're looking at is OpenGov. So it'll allow for really interactive, so instead of having these books, that takes the finance team a lot of time to put those together. This document will be an interactive that you can bring up on your tablets or on your laptops, and people can follow along at home. So it creates more of a transparency process, too. So we're looking forward to trying to get that implemented for this year.
That's just a finance tool? It's not?
It's for department heads, and then, once the adopted budget, the good thing about this is then it can be imported into Munis, so it wouldn't allow Alicia to have to sit there and actually manually type all this stuff into Munis. So, goes with their streamlining that we talked, that you mentioned on the first goal.
So, I mean, I think making this, your process, more efficient is great. I'm curious if -- do you have any information on how often open checkbook is accessed by people who aren't in this building?
I'm not sure.
Coming from the website?
Well, yeah, or, yeah.
I mean, we can look at that. I can see how many people go to that, that's, you know, portion of the site. I can get statistics on that.
We can get that.
We do have OpenGov, you know, on, or, what's it called?
Open Checkbook.
Open Checkbook, online. So, we can get figures on that.
I was just curious. I'm only asking, you know, if part of the cost is, or the reason we're doing it is to give it, make access to the public, but only three people have looked at it over the last year. Like, let's streamline our systems and not spend a lot of money for that tiny little benefit. If it, we get it for free, sure, right? Just do it. But, yeah.
So, what I've seen with the open checkbook, it's more financial, like drilling into the finance part. Some of these new softwares are more user-friendly for those who are not finance-oriented. So it's broken down in a different way. It's displayed in multiple different ways. So, it's a little bit more user-friendly.
Yeah.
So, it's definitely up to your honorable body, but we're just looking to streamline and make things as transparent as possible.
I think that's a, that's a great goal.
If I may interject, one of the things is we're getting a lot more requests for that information, too, through all the, that are coming through our office. And so, it'll make it easier for the public to be able to find that information versus going through our office, asking for it, so that it's right there, so they don't have to come to us.
That's great.
By request, FOIA request.
FOIA request, yeah.
Yeah, just to be clear.
So, can you, can you respond to a FOIA request by saying, "The information is available on the website?"
Absolutely. So if it's available there, that's all we have to say.
Oh, that's really cool. Okay, good. That would be a good one.
Yeah.
Still interested in the numbers. Probably 100 hits a day are coming from Steven. Oh.
Boston, what's the IP address?
Increased documentation for all special revenue funds, including award letters, contracts, or amendments of acceptance. So sometimes things happen and get approved, and we don't get the documentation, and people are like, "Oh, we want to do this, and we've already done that." And we're like, "Okay, where's the documentation?" So, we'd like to make sure that we get the proper documentation on time as a goal, and people know what we expect in order to create the accounts when they get that one. Additional Munis training for employees on the system. We're implementing the PACE training system through Munis. Munis is an awesome system, but it is not user-friendly. It's not intuitive. So, there are a lot of things that some folks don't know how to use and probably want to know how to use, and by implementing PACE, they'll be able to go in online themselves and look at the training they need.
And then I think, Michelle, I think you had new Munis modules in your goals as well? Am I right about that?
Yep.
Would that work? Would PACE work for both, for all of you? I mean...
Yes, yes, because we're rolling out a new chart of accounts in July, so I'll have to give everybody all new accounts, and they'll be able to have access to that PACE program. Continue to roll out of modules and minutes, including without limited to cashiering in the Treasury's office, general billing for departments to track outstanding receivables, and possible use of a human resource module. So I think ours kind of coincide, but the reason for that is just better controls.
So, some of the goals we also, oh, I should probably use this up. Some of the other goals that we have really revolve around personnel. One of the things that we're seeing across the state, even here, you know, at some points is, you know, being able to retain and train good employees. Municipal finance, it's hard to find those good ones and hold on to them. So really, building a team with, you know, the right levels of education and being able to grow roles so that we do have core redundancies in those key functions. We really want to do the boring stuff well. It's just very dependent on having the team in place so that payrolls, APs, the general letters are all in good shape, which flies under the radar until it doesn't and becomes really expensive. So as part of that, one of the things that we really believe in is sort of a one, two, three system. Your first person is the superstar at whatever function that is, with the second being a capable backup, and the third is sort of a break glass. Okay, I can pick up the document, you know, documentation and run through it. It'll be slow, but it'll get done. So right now, we're not there yet, unfortunately, but it's just being realistic, and that's something that we really want to get to, and that's part of about building a team, bringing in an analyst, and then training the people we have so that they're in a position to succeed.
Do you think you're at one, two yet?
It depends. So like, you know, earlier, like in the spring, like our lead payroll person left, but we had cross-trained ahead of time for that. But, so that's, you know, something I was taking on during those couple of months, but obviously...
So it was one, three. What's that? So it was one, three.
It was one, three, yeah. I was kind of like the Scott Zolak for bringing it here. But, no, we got it done, but then when, you know, things get more complex, you know, we need those really specialized people in there to get it done. So, it really comes down to, you know, keeping developing on that front. So, let's put all of it in.
Sean, if I may, I think it's one thing that we discussed prior also, is hiring a person that will be able to be cross-trained throughout the departments. If Heather were to be out, or if Ashley would be out, or if Kendry Place were to be out, that person will be able to step into that role to be there to answer the phones, be able to handle the FOIA requests when they're out, be able to do payroll if they're out, be able to do AP if they're out. I think that's a big piece that we're actually missing throughout the town as a whole, and we discussed it prior, Anthony and I, is we need to look for that piece of the puzzle that's going to make it work for all of us.
Thank you.
Utility player.
So, just going down the line?
Yep. Actually, can we just jump in here? Just, I think you mentioned OpenGov. ClearGov is another systems out there. We're just doing some evaluations of those systems, or what's the thought there?
Thank you. Yes, we're going to do some demos, and if your honorable body wants to be a part of that, I can actually...
I don't think we have to get in the way of it. I just wanted to know if we're just sold on OpenGov because of your experience and used it in the past, or if you've looked at ClearGov. I think we've been...
You had experience with Clear.
I did. I've had experience with ClearGov in the past. I used it, but it did have some bugs at the time, and a lot of other CFOs were experiencing the same thing. Hopefully, they've cleaned up those bugs, but we are looking at just different demos out there to see what's available and what looks the best for the town. And I'll be doing that with the town administration.
The other question I had was relative to, this is going to be the same question for everybody when it comes down to employee development, training, as far as, is that something that's already in the budget for, for right now?
Yes, we increased our education and training budget for next fiscal 2023.
Okay, great. Thanks.
And we did it overall for a town by putting more money into HR.
That was an even more pointed question than was going to be on Michelle, but absolutely. I mean, those are resources that a couple of folks have talked about retention, and I'm sure a couple of folks, that's in, you know, a couple of folks' narratives. So I think that it's critical that we, I think we all support that. We want to attract the right people, train the right people, retain those people that we invest in. So we want to make sure that we're funding that appropriately, so now we don't have to ask those silly anyways.
If I can, to the chair, I just want to mention that the property department already uses OpenGov, and we're streamlining our process where all of the property documents are being scanned and uploaded. So, when Diane does get a FOIA request, she can direct them right to OpenGov now on our side.
Okay, good.
So I don't know how OpenGov for the financial side might work or how it coincides, but we're already investing in OpenGov. I was excited to hear that that was one of the options, so.
Excellent.
It would be a different, a different type of module than what you're using, but it would talk to each other, which would be nice, and it would show things in a different way. So, I've seen one demo where they were showing like police overtime, for instance, and you could keep drilling pretty far into the police and see what's driving costs, or TPW, what's driving costs, and it just shows it in different ways, which is really interactive, which I found was really cool, but I wanted to see another demo and some more softwares that are available.
Excellent.
Do you have a question?
My question is just, and it's going to be the same for everyone, is if there's anything we as a board can explicitly do for you or you're asking for us over the next year. I mean, you have your goals, you have your internal department goals, and you're going to need our support on some of these, but some of them are like, you might explicitly need something, and I'd like to know what those are so that we don't lose those. If there's...
I think the answer to that question for everybody is going to be money, because I think a lot of the stuff that they want to do is just, it's going to be budgetary requests on some of the stuff.
But I saw a lot of like, meaning staff, meaning staff, and I think retention and like, you know, finding staff that's qualified in retention is, is one that we should all take seriously as a board, because it's obviously a job seeker's market at this point, and everyone seems to be understaffed. So, I noticed that, and I was going to bring it up later, but, yeah.
When we pass the mic, you can leave the mic in front of you. Once there's a question, the mics are in the ceiling, they'll be able to pick you up. It's just more for keeping the flow.
Pass on the button.
It's on. The talking stick.
It's over here.
I think, yeah, it's out of range.
Good afternoon, Maron Toofell, Town Planner. Planning Department is soon to become a part of the Land Use and Buildings Department. Looking forward to becoming fully staffed eventually and moving to the space in the lower level of the old library. Got quite a long list of planning studies that are scheduled to be done over the next year, and also hopefully tag which department or board would lead that process. I'm trying to do one of these because I don't have the bandwidth, the staff to tackle hazard mitigation plan, the open space and recreation plan, the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, and what else do we have going? We have the rezoning, required rezoning at the MBTA near rail station to be done by end of 2024.
GDR.
Transport developments, update the housing production plan, help support initial overregional greenways, just lots of things that are going on. But I have found that over time, there certainly are a lot of stakeholders that are invested in each of those processes. Hopeful that the, those boards and committees and individuals will really step up and keep the momentum or bring, bring those projects forward. So that was the big picture. You have the details in front of you.
One thing I noticed was you had grants, Alicia, I think you had grants, EHS had grants. I think, I know ConsCom would always love to get grant money. Is there anything, is there any commonality there where there could be some, you know, core work that can be done by someone where it would be more efficient? And if so, what form would that take, Brad?
Very good question. I think that's worth a deeper discussion. Right now, we're left with the grant process, that's who's available and who knows how to do grants. And, you know, right now, Anthony's and my time is all supposed to be on that, but...
And I'd also say that chasing the grants is one thing. When you get the grants, the grant management is significant.
Oh, is that significant, too? Yeah. It might be worth having a discussion about a grants manager, who could really write all the grants and then do the reporting. And then, the good part about having a grants manager is every grant that we get, usually you can do up to 10% for administrative costs associated with that. So that could actually fund the position. And we could do something creatively, so it's not putting a burden on the budget, but it would actually help, I think, the departments a lot in chasing down some of these grants.
Maybe there are people who do it on contingency.
Could be. Could be. There is, yeah. Percentage of the grant.
Happy to answer any questions. That's the big picture.
I just got to throw this out there. I appreciate all the time and effort everybody put into this, and it's tough when you get a homework assignment, you have to get something into the principal. But, a lot of the stuff that we got is stuff that you're working on, it's kind of what's expected of the role that you play. And I'm just not picking on you, Maron, because I have it in front of me right now, but like, the bicycle pedestrian master plan, the show original greenways, transfer development rights, they're down there kind of as bullet points and stuff that we're constantly working on. You're constantly working on it. I'm not going to say we, because... But, if there's specifics to a goal, like what is, is there something specific this year relative to transfer development rights that you're hoping to accomplish, and is it something that we, when we're doing our goals, can support you with, help you with, provide resources for? Kind of loaded.
Yeah, I certainly understand the question and would like to get to the point where I have an opportunity to say, by this date, it would be nice to have this done, but right now, use your words, drinking from the fire hose. It's, I'm not at a point where I can do that.
Completely understood.
Yeah, it's all your staffing required.
There you go.
Again, common theme. I think everybody did a great job of letting us know kind of what's, what's going on, what's kind of the big picture, and these are things we want to get done, but in some instances, there's specifics, in other instances, there's not specifics and objectives, and, you know, so that's, it just helps us a little bit more the tighter it is.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. And in permitting right now, with so many applications in front of the planning board, everything else tends to take a backseat, and that's, that's why there's such a long list of things, of things that are still to be addressed.
Again, not picking on you, just...
Glad to have the conversation.
Exactly. Thanks.
That kind of leads back to what I was saying. It's like, what can we do to help you? You know, outside of hiring new bodies, which, you know, what can we do sitting up here to help you? Right, I mean...
I mean, this is good, because we're kind of like a grant writer, grant manager, that we're, you know, we're kind of throwing some stuff in the parking lot. Like, these are things that we could potentially come back and revisit, and it sounds like that would benefit, I mean, I don't think there's a department in here that doesn't have the opportunity, at least for some sort of grant from the state or the federal government or private entities, you know? So if there's, if that's available to us, we should definitely dig a little deeper.
Well, at the very least, make it parts of training, and when we are hiring new people, maybe throw that question in there so you make that a priority as...
Experience with grants.
...any experience, and that's a huge value added to any...
Sure is.
Okay, go.
All right. Alicia Day, the Director for Littleton Parks Recreation and Community Education. Just following up on that, I agree. I mean, the grants is something that we focus a lot on, and that is one of the goals that we'll talk about today. So, I know when I've worked in other communities, City of Pittsburgh, we did actually have a grants manager. So, it was a huge help to many of the departments to be able to have that person. I mean, a lot of times, as department heads, we would do some of the legwork ourselves, but to have that person as that resource to help you through the whole process and to be able to manage all of the requirements after, it's, it is a huge benefit to have that person. So, I'll just throw that in there as well. So, a lot of the goals that we have on here are more of the high level. We have a lot of internal goals that, you know, with programming, special events, et cetera, that, you know, we have those in-house. But, so some of the bigger things that we want to be able to accomplish moving forward for 2023 would be, we've already started this process of changing the department funding from the enterprise over to a blended general fund and revolving, but we have to actually implement that. So this is going to be the first year of really moving off of that enterprise, because we will still have it open, and then being able to just work through and make sure that we figure out all the bugs, so that when we go to 50 years, we can inform that we're that's all and everything works extremely efficiently. So, there'll be a lot of work with that this year. One big one that's been on my list for a few years has been to develop a 10-year strategic plan, specifically focusing on space needs for our department, park and facility improvements, creation of new playing fields, parks, and playgrounds, and including ADA and AAV access issues and improvements. That's definitely one area that I know our department and the Parks Commission has been really passionate about wanting to move forward with the accessibility issues. So, you know, we have a lot of things coming up, like the open space and recreation plan. We do have the funding to be able to do the Statistically Valid Survey, which is going to go out hopefully soon, so that we'll be able to input that data into the open space and recreation plan. So, you know, all of that stuff kind of melds together perfectly this year, which is really great. And so, the next step would be developing a financial strategy. One of the things with our department, we're kind of that odd department out with funding, right? So we have to try to figure out a funding mechanism that works and strategically plan those projects. So that goes for research grants, things like that, to lessen the burden of finance on the town. And additionally, and I know I've talked to this with FinCom specifically, that, you know, we want to be able to create that reserve for our department, so that if something were to happen, like COVID again, that we do have a safe buffer that, you know, we're not going to have to worry about finances. I want to make sure that our department is going to be taken care of. So, that's something that we want to really work on, is developing what that reserve will be. It will also give us the opportunity to be able to help out, complete projects that, you know, we haven't been able to do through capital or other means. I already mentioned the Statistically Valid Survey, so we have all that. We just need to get the bid out and then get that going. Researching land opportunities and, if possible, developing right so first refusal with town council. I think that's something, again, that's part of that strategic planning, thinking about with our park system, future vision of what our park system is going to look like within the town of Littleton. So I think those are really important components that would set us up for success into the future. And continue working with the public schools, like water highway department, to be able to maintain the athletic playing fields and review and update the, and address the 2017 fields we need study. So we need to proactively plan future field closures, because we have some of those that are coming up, which does end up affecting the youth sports organizations and usage of the school and parks and recreation as well. So, being able to really make sure that we have the space to provide access to continue with those sports and not have to diminish or have to lessen some of the sports depending on, you know, the year and the space that we have. So, yeah, that, again, it's all kind of about strategic planning and really thinking about being three or four steps ahead of the process. And then the last piece that I had on here was just updating the NOU. This is always with the public schools and the select board to start reinstating that for implementation in 2023. So, yeah, check.
Amen.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I was going to say, one of the things that I am interested in is trying to rationalize the open space conservation, like recreation land use in town. I think there's a lot of different people, and like both governmental and like the Conservation Trust, who are interested in finding a way to be more mindful of what's, what's coming up. We seem to react to things at the last minute and scramble it when something comes available, but, but having a plan, and I think in Amy, you're, I think you had a, you know, there's a rubric basically for like, looking at land and trying to decide whether it's a good candidate or not. It seems like there's a bunch of consumers of the land that could all work together and say, "Okay, well, this one's perfect for water conservation, this one's going to be a playing field, and this one's going to be, you know, we're going to have a conservation restriction on this for, for 10 years."
And we have been meeting regularly about parcels in town, so that's something Kathy Miller had put together, and there's a group of us that are meeting. So, we have recently been discussing those pieces, which has been really great.
Right, the town owned parcels.
Yes. Yes, town, sorry, the town. Thank you for clarifying that.
I guess I'm saying...
I guess I'm saying, you know, maybe we want to formalize that with a committee or a working group that actually makes a plan and does it. I would like to do that.
Yeah.
So just to clarify, so that group already exists, Alicia, that's analyzing town owned property?
It's more just department heads meeting, going through to see, to try to help clear up some of the maps, and I guess how everything's, there's numbers that they're all coded by, so just making sure that everything's up to date.
The land use codes.
Thank you, yes, land use codes are up to date for the websites, you can search it.
Yes.
What is it geared toward identifying property owned by the town as well?
Yeah, so that's all we're looking at.
We're looking at every parcel, all by the town.
So eventually we'll get a summary of all those parcels and how they're categorized and what will be the result.
Yeah, exactly. For instance, you know, Alicia, I would say, we have no interest in that parcel, maybe the butterwood, or that would be a great parcel for a pocket park or something like that, so.
Yeah.
We're housing, I know, we're trying to go through them all and initially just clean up, especially the land use codes.
Right.
Like, oh, I know that.
Would it make sense to expand that, to include things like recreation and conservation? Or is that?
It's included.
All the parcels.
Okay.
Yeah, and just one more question, the fields, the fields need study?
Yeah.
I thought you said 2007, 2007, was that?
Seventeen.
All right, that's what I thought, all right, I missed it.
That's okay.
Okay, great, thanks.
I just had one question on, when you're classifying the town owned land, is that including the light and water land as well?
Yes.
One of the things we do is like, we identify small lots, you know, traffic around the lake, if the town owns more than two or three contiguous lots, Kathy and I take the time, and Kathy will actually join the lots, because they still don't make a full 40,000, they don't make a building of acre. So why have four different town owned parcels when it's really just one, when you take out the center line? So we're working on it, so it is an endeavor.
You have something, Chuck? Yes, just relative to the rights of first refusal, working with Town Council, can walk us through that a little bit? Like, are you thinking that identify parcels, that would be a great future recreational use, and go talk to the homeowners or property owners?
Yeah, because there's definitely some different locations or property that may be abutting up next to some of these town parcels, that potentially could be something really useful in the future, as far as parks and recreation goes, but, you know, other uses as well, so, yeah.
So proactively going and talking about.
Proactively.
For instance, we've talked about right behind the beach, you know, there's a couple of parcels there that.
Right, yeah, and they've gone up for sale a few times in the past, so that's something that, you know, if that were to happen again, it'd be really nice to be able to have already had that conversation.
An example of doing that is what we just did with 31 Chatham Street, right? Is that was abutted, it had a benefit to us, and I think that's what she's looking at.
A little reactionary.
Right.
Pro act, I want to be proactive.
And one other thing that Park and Rec does, and I asked them a lot to do, is do community events, events that's not for a fee, that brings the community together, you know, and a good example of that is Oktoberfest, you know, that's a great event. And we talked about recently doing some, you know, concerts at Fay Park, and, you know, where we can do something like that. And we did allocate money into their budget for that, but, you know, that does put more of a demand on Alicia and her staff to do those, but those are important for the community to come together, especially after being cooped up for the last two years, it's really good. It was really great this fall to get out there together, and to be able to do it and have a beer together was even more enjoyable.
There was beer?
You missed it, Sid.
I was there.
Oh.
So following that up, the additional piece that I would add would be the class in cost. Thanks, Alicia. The class in cost. All right, so that would be the only additional component, I think, that would really benefit. I mean, we have amazing staff, and we're really fortunate to have the different people that we have working for us, and, you know, it would be wonderful if I had the ability to be able to pay them on their work. And right now, we're not there, so to be able to do that sooner than later, so that we don't end up losing these really amazing staff, would be very important moving forward.
I just got one thing, if you're going to throw together things like Anthony said, these community events, I suggest you plan, start circulating a lot more earlier on what you're planning to do, because I bet you there's a lot of other organizations in town that would help support them, like the LICM or Cultural Council, and they don't know about them, so you could get more, you could make it a bigger event with more publicity and more funding, just by reaching out to the right groups.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Amy Green, Conservation Agent, good afternoon. We had two main goals, number one goal was staffing, which has been posted, yay, thank you. We'll see what we get, because there's at least 20 other towns posting out there right now, too, and it's a little thin. And the second main goal that the Commission and I were talking about was trying to revitalize somehow the Open Space Committee, or what is now the Open Space and Recreation Plan Implementation Committee, which has a very tight focus to something with a little broader focus, the Conservation Commission, you know, spent hours at the meetings going through permitting, so there's not much time to talk about open space pieces of it. And it would certainly be helpful to me to have a group of residents that we can kick around, especially, you know, priorities, what does open space need, and how are we going to manage our lands, basically, and then also manage what we have and look forward to what we might want to acquire in the future. And then some other goals that were discussed are not quite as high priority, was the Open Space Management Improvements. Right now, the Lillington Conservation Trust does over 1,000 hours of work a year, maintaining the trails and doing some of the mowing. Highway does a huge piece of the fields, but the trust, usually one or two people, is doing all the mowing of the trails with their own equipment, and they will be the first to say that they are aging out, and their equipment is aging out, and they've kind of had it. So finding some way of, you know, maybe maintaining that DPW does the bulk of the field mowing, but somehow we figure out a way to get the trails mowed, because a lot of our trails go through fields, they do need pretty regular milling to be kept open, is actually a pretty high priority. As always, right now, when everything's growing like crazy, we can't get out there. Land acquisition was another goal, and that is, as you mentioned, kind of more reactive than proactive. Suddenly, a property that we look at is on the market, and we're just scrambling, trying to find funding for it. Again, we rely a lot on the trust to have maintained connections with landowners. Rick Finley had connections with the Browns family for, I don't know, a decade, talking to them about it, so that when the finally was ready to come up, it still took another couple of years, I think, but, you know, they were thinking about it before they just went on the market, sold developer for a prime amount. The, oh, and actually, because that also comes with sort of the parcel review prioritization, and how you come up with some sort of mechanism for reviewing them, which is tough, because I might look at a parcel and say, if it's not 20 acres, it's not worth it, but a half acre, I keep saying, like a pocket park, might be perfect for something else, so it's hard to say, how do you weigh those two things in terms of importance? The invasive species control has been an ongoing challenge, and I'm working with the trust, and we're trying to, and with Southern Valley Trustees, to get some training done, get public education out there, and help people either control the invasive on their own property, as well as to hopefully encourage them to come onto town property and help us control our invasive species. You have the winner of the garlic mustard pull over there.
It wasn't hard.
Well, you picked the right spot, obviously. And as much as the training and getting volunteers, one of the challenges of that is, what do we do with this stuff, especially the garlic mustard, which spreads so easily, when we have 100 pounds of it, and there's no place to put it? We can't, you know, take it to the transfer station, none of those places won't accept it. You either need a place to bury it, or a place to stockpile and burn it, and just finding a place to do that is actually a pretty big consideration.
Can we bring it to air or something?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Oh, I believe, and I asked about a dumpster fire.
No.
No, I'm gonna say no. Or if we did end up having, you know, do a controlled burn over at Brown's, was an anchor, well, this stuff on it while you're training? And having a place where the public can take their invasive species, I think would be a real benefit to folks. The conservation restrictions, this is kind of a small piece, it's just making sure, especially working with planning, that when SCR is set up, that there is some thought about how much effort is to set that up, get it through EEA, do the baseline documentation, hopefully get it balanced, put in from now on, so we know where they are 10 years from now. The Community Preservation Act is a goal that was more kind of thrown out there, there was no one on the Commission who was expecting to take the lead on it, but that goes towards the fact, especially from our point of view, that land prices have gone up so much, that increasing the surcharge for CPC may be worth someone considering at some point. There's a huge benefit to be able to go to a landowner, and who is either willing to sell or thinking of selling, and having a discussion with them, and saying, you know, it might take the town a while to come up with money, but we have $1 or $2 million sitting here in case we can't get a grant, so that they have some assurance that they're not going to be spinning their wheels for two years, while we try to come up with money otherwise, or binding or something almost. And I think the only thing I had in there was sort of a public education piece, which I think is actually pretty important, but is always on a back burner. I'm working right now with the library on some of the pollinator stuff, because we have the pollinator plantings around the outside of the library, so there'll be a garden tour out there for the public, come in, see what's out there, get some education, do some programming, hopefully with the school and stuff, and just start pulling people in. And I think that's the overview. On the mowing, I know we just bought a brand new tractor mower, I'm wondering if, what would it, I mean, what's the bottleneck for DPW? Is it staff, is it money?
First thing on my list.
Yeah.
The, I mean, it lines up with summer employment, to me, to some degree, not perfectly, obviously, but just, you would think we could do temporary hires over the summer with doing this type of work.
We have advertised, I mean, we got a couple people that wanted an answer, you just can't find.
Not necessarily for your department, you know, even if it's through, maybe that's.
We advertised for two summer help, and didn't get anybody, and my experience, a few exits down the highway, was it was usually people in this room who had teenage kids that needed a summer job, you know, it was department heads or other town employees that had nephews, cousins, uncles, whatever, somewhere, you know, it's just, it's people that want to go weed whack, but 20 bucks on a helping.
And paid or unpaid internships can be helpful, but they're also a lot of work, too, so it's a mixed blessing.
I was curious, with 100 pounds of mustard, what's that look like? How many purple trash bags?
It's sitting in someone's driveway right now. A lot of people, we were encouraging people who, especially responding to that as well as otherwise, to let it sit in a black bag in your driveway for two weeks, and it can go into a purple bag, and it can go up there. There's, I don't know, 20, 30 bags sitting in someone's driveway, that they're going to open up on Saturday, and they're going to be able to drop them. So we've got one solution, one day.
Yeah, the cravatone, you can run the cravatone.
No, I was saying, right in the back of the fire station, there's a lot of room back there for bags.
I said no.
Just a universal no?
No. But if you have another one, give it a shot.
So just one more, so just curious, what are some of the other towns doing to, they having the same type of staffing, issues with this type of work, or is it, or they just hit it with full-time employees, added more?
I think the amount of work that, I shouldn't even say this so they can hear, the amount of work the Conservation Trust does is amazing, it really is, and a lot of other towns, it either doesn't get done, or it is town staff that's doing it.
I'm on some of the Conservation emails, and there's a call for volunteers just about every weekend, every other weekend, so, I saw the one for weeding on Saturday.
Yeah, Culverdale.
Yeah.
Any other question? All right.
This is silent for.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone, thank you for having me, Steve Downey, Director of Public Works, been here now for about, I don't know, three months, so I appreciate the opportunity to put this together and have the discussion. First thing, you know, we just touched on a little bit staffing levels, I think I could sit here after just three months and talk for an hour and 10 minutes, if we're going to fight a war, about the need for one, if not two more people right now. You know, I think I could very easily justify that. Either split person, part-time to help at the transfer station when one of them is on vacation, or between parks, one of them's on vacation, or just general help. It's clear to me real quick that the department needs a little bit more manpower across the board, you know, but again, we can, I can dig further, or deeper into that, as we get into budget season, towards the fall and stuff, and certainly come up with ways to justify the need for some additional staff. Looking at vehicle and equipment replacement schedules, I saw the, kind of the capital plan that Chris had put together, predecessor, that was like kind of a, looked like a 12 to 15 year kind of lookout, went into the early 2030s, I think, for capital replacement of vehicles and equipment. I moved some of that stuff around after talking to Anthony, my, just my feelings on some of the equipment and my experience in Chelmsford over the last 20 years. I felt the need to move some of the equipment up, like say, the street sweeper, it's approaching almost 20 years old, they typically tend to off years lifespan on those things, before they either get auctioned or go to reserve status, so we're on borrowed time almost already on that thing, you know, and it's more or less running every day, it'll be down for a month or so in the summer, but then we're back out in the fall after the spring sweep, and the sweep basically, until snow flies. You know, there's still a couple of dump trucks running that are from the early 90s, I know the town, some, maybe 10, 12 years ago, has no longer had appropriated 20, 25,000 to like refurbish the trucks, to try to buy some more time out of them. That has worked to a point, but eventually, you know, I got a truck that's from 92, 93, they're not like, you know, just a Corvette that sits in the corner of your garage, they're out getting, you know, working every day, so, just to keep up, and I know the town's doing a very good job, we got some new equipment, we got, there was a dump truck approved last year, unfortunately, it's not even in the schedule to be built yet, and there was one just approved at town meeting, that we can't technically order until October, and then maybe we'll have it for winter of '23 or something, I don't know, they're more than 12 months out on those dump trucks, so, you know, I guess it kind of is what it is at this point. But again, just keeping up with kind of that replacement schedule that's been going on the last couple of years, is good. Third point, the facility, was built in the mid 80s, looks like it was built in the mid 80s, at least the highway side, and more of my point is storage and the size of the facility. There's a lot of equipment stored outside, we squirrel away a lot of stuff on the light department side, they have stashing stuff on, kind of, not that it's, you know, we have fields from the course here, but, you know, we kind of want to have stuff separated, so we know whose is what, but there's stuff all over the place, and stuff's outside, it shouldn't be outside in the winter, because there's no space in the garage. Mechanics space tight, the office space is tight, the lunchroom is also, the meeting room is also the locker room, you know, the other facilities in the building should be updated. I know Anthony and Chuck were at a. I know Anthony and Chuck were at a meeting with, about the sewer project that I had had an earlier discussion with Nick from Light and Water about, you know, what their plans were for sewer going forward. Maybe it was something that, you know, they take over the whole complex and we find a spot or it's, you know, we were tasked with kind of looking at the needs of everybody down there and, you know, just as kind of an internal look ahead. And then maybe we'll make some decisions going forward on if we need, you know, a full feasibility study type of thing just for the needs of the department. As the demands of the department grow, you hear, you know, we can barely keep up with the mowing and like roadside mowing, never mind mowing in conservation land and, you know, the athletic fields and things like that, as well as just general roadwork maintenance that the department needs. So again, just, you know, bringing up the discussion, I've got to start someplace, right? So blame the new guy, right? Walks in once a new building already, but you know, again, got to, got to at least plant the seed and start the discussion. The fourth thing, again, just continuing, the town's had a fairly aggressive kind of roadway maintenance program the last few years, appropriating a lot of money, thankful for that. Roadway improvements as well as some of the upcoming demands with the NFTs permitting, with the MS4 program, the Phase 2 stormwater program, will be some things we need to do with that. So again, just thankful for the funding that we receive and hopefully we can continue to receive that funding. Transfer station, obviously there's a lot of discussion every year when, you know, the schedules come out with sticker fees, bag fees, that type of thing. I had a good meeting a week or so ago with the waste management folks, they're the current contractor for the disposal. Learned a few things, but also just in kind of watching operation, obviously, you know, familiar with it, living in town for so long. I think there's a few things we can do to maybe streamline, save a little bit of money. So I think over the course of the summer and into the fall, we'll be looking at some of that and then maybe, you know, do, have a discussion with the board and lay the date on some of that stuff. Just some things I think we can do to streamline operations and maybe save a little money at the same time. And lastly, looking at some of the capital plan in terms of highway DPW with the work we do at the parks and stuff. I know there was a plan or Chris had carried a number for some irrigation install to the right of the middle school, we're kind of across, and I think Pup Warner Practice currently it just gets set up with the whip off town water and the water cannon they tow around. He had kind of put a number together for some irrigation install on that side. And then I was talking to the guys when we were looking at the line painting robot over at the baseball field, Whitcomb Field, that's run off the pump out of the pond in the back. Possibly maybe doing some, you know, irrigation install over there in the future for the number to it as opposed to again pushing that giant water cannon around everywhere and then maybe looking inside the track and then looking at other fields and things. I know some have it, some don't have it, but again, just kind of, you know, thinking about it because you look at like jet field, the softball field, field looks beautiful. You know, it's the high school complex generally looks good, I know there's a lot of that's going to get torn up with the sewer project, but then it will be rebuilt, so things, you know, just to, just to consider going forward. As opposed to, you know, it takes, takes staff time to move that, you know, cannon around. So if I can get, you know, automated irrigation, now you can run it all off your phone, so I think it just, it helps and it'll free up staff to do other things. So with that, that's, you know, pretty much...
Steve, you had mentioned in your narrative about potential of drilling, onsite drilling.
Wells, yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Versus running off the, I mean, right now we go out of the back of Whitcomb, we go out of the...
Yeah.
Feeding pond, but in a dry summer, you don't get a lot of water out of it. But, but obviously go do some sort of cost analysis and figure out the cost of the drilling and all that kind of stuff.
Yep.
I'm sure that Corey could probably give you some guidance on water level for management and all that kind of stuff too.
Yep, so last summer I drilled a deep well, it was 300 and ended up 300 and almost 400 feet, call it for conversation sake. The cost, I mean, obviously materials are up, steel's up, some casings up, it was an eight-inch well, five horsepower, running a almost 10-acre, literally complex. And the cost of the well was a little over 20 grand.
When you look at the big items like facilities or the large vehicles, how do you finalize that plan? Like what's the process for that usually?
So my experience, and I've done it specifically for the last 10 years, the vehicle and equipment replacement program. You're looking at condition, use, mileage, hours, you know, some of them don't run, the equipment's run on engine hours type of thing. You know, what specifically the piece of equipment's doing, is it got a single purpose? Is it doing six different things, you know, different times of the year, it's got different attachments on it? The trucks, big trucks typically, you want to try to run it for 20 years. Small trucks like a pickup or a one-ton, maybe a 10 to 12-year because they're plowing. Here, the one-tons all have Little Pony Sanders in the back, so they're not just plowings, no, they're also running Sanders. So, you know, that'll maybe drop that down to the nine or 10-year, try to get into the replacement schedule because they're doing different things and it's carrying weight all winter. You know, that's a good rule of thumb on the trucks. Again, equipment, it depends on the purpose, you know, you'll get a little more life out of a front-end loader than you're going to get out of maybe a sidewalk machine if the sidewalk machine's going to do multiple purposes. You know, they make a million attachments for them, we use them for everything, my experience anyway. We had road mowers on them, snow blowers, snow plows, sweeper, yeah, everything. So again, it's, it depends on the specific piece.
Are the building and the irrigation systems on the 10-year capital plan currently?
You didn't have those to your plan yet, right?
He had, from what I saw, the side of the middle school, Chris had a number. I forget the actual year on the slide, but that was in there. There wasn't, I didn't see anything else. I say it's just our experience, we were drilling wells everywhere to avoid trying to pull town water. I mean, we even had a well on Carmen in the center of town, so.
I must know your staffing, you find it more so, is it seasonal? Will you really get stretched in or is it more, you're talking year-round? I know in the winter you probably have a lot more contract help to some degree, but I'm just curious if it's...
Yeah, and the contract help is solely when it's snowing.
Right.
Obviously, the demands slow a little bit in the winter. But come April 1st to the time the snow flies, you know...
Pretty much full-time, year-round then?
Yeah, I mean, again, I could very easily justify one person right now sitting at this table.
You mean you're going to pick one of us?
Yes, come on down, stop tomorrow.
This is the first I've heard of space needs.
No, Chris, Chris... From an equipment standpoint, talked about needing to do salt shed potentially and putting something off the back of the existing building because of the, you had mentioned the mechanic space.
Yeah, we actually had that in there.
Washout as well, I think to wash down the vehicles before it all spreads calcium and everything else?
Yeah, so they're still washing vehicles outside, so that's not the right thing to be doing.
The only other thing, I was curious, police, I know fire probably had to have the same issue when we're ordering a truck, how long it's taken, they typically take a long time anyway, but you're talking 18 months before we can even...
Solely on a dump truck, I was, I won't do that. I don't want to say it because I know fire department searching for a pickup, but I was lucky to find it.
Just for instance.
So where'd you get that from?
You can say no back to him. Okay.
You need a red one though. We just took delivery on our approval from two years ago for the F-150. It was about a year and a half ago, it's special.
It's definitely a problem. You don't have a problem with cruisers right now, right?
If we were to go with just the gas cruisers, yes we would, but we went with the hybrid cruisers this time. So we'll actually have those in service by July 15.
Green communities will be very happy if you got a hybrid out there.
And again, with the pickup truck, I got lucky. I don't know what else to say, they must have ordered them and somebody didn't take them, so they had green Chevy 2500 sitting at Liberty Chevy.
They're like, if they have anything.
That's, that's who's got the Chevy state contract anyways.
I can go with green, green's fine.
Just as Steve picked it up, Bob's was canceled.
I told him, bring it to life.
Far as your aging fleet, this is, you know, just being on FinCom, I know, we see the capital request every year and it's, it always amazes us that historically you're not asking for vehicles. It seems like they're very limited in what you ask for, and I know that's probably a testament to James Clyde taking, you know, wanting to work vehicles right until they probably went into the ground. But I think, I was always amazed, looking at the years of your vehicles compared to other departments, you know, like how is that still running? But it never came up, I don't think, when we see a vehicle come up usually from your capital, we usually know that it's time.
It's tired.
It's really tired, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a testament to Bill the mechanic.
Yeah.
Who's retired, but he's still working. That they've kept these things running all this time, but especially now with the large trucks and the lead time.
Yeah.
You know, until that, we see some kind of turnaround in that stuff.
So you mentioned Bill retiring, you've got some other members, I mean, you're saying you can use one to two right now without anybody leaving, but you've got some other members of your department that are, from a succession plan standpoint, you're going to have to backfill pretty soon, so we can go from one to two to three to four.
Yep.
As soon as those hooks.
Yep, the department, from the sounds of it, is fully staffed right now for the first time in a long time, at least on the...
You shouldn't have said that.
We have a fully staffed in the month of June. But yeah, we have a guy moving, moving south the end of the month.
Derek.
Derek, yeah. So, you know, can't fault him for picking up and going way down south, close to the family, so. He'll be a loss, he's working for them for the highways, so we'll figure out...
He operates everything he got to, right? His hydraulics and the CDL and, yeah. That was a question I had, relative to if we, if we go to get to the point where we say, yeah, you do need some bodies. In the past, I know we've had some, some folks that were qualified, with the exception of not having their hydraulics or not having their CDL or just not having some licensure that is required in the job description. That might be something that we could revisit and just have an expectation that they get them within a certain timeframe or something like that, where if we're due the opportunity to broaden the net a little bit.
And again, I, you know, my experience, a few exits down the highway, we started doing that a couple of years ago just to kind of widen the pool, get them in the door and then give them 12 months to get a CDL or a hoisting or something, just to try to get a body.
Yeah, and sometimes you have what you think is a good candidate, everything else worked out, they just don't have the license.
Exactly.
So maybe something we could work with Michelle and the Personnel Advisory Committee and kind of do some re-tweak in that.
Any other questions? Cool, thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
Can I say something? So the one thing that I had consistently brought up when I did my budgeting presentations was there's a statistic that for every 10 acres that highway takes care of, there's supposed to be one staff member.
I'm aware of these.
Right, yeah.
It's like every lane mile, it's so many, so many employees.
Right, so that's, that's the piece of currently you have two, maybe three if you're lucky, right? So, and 70-ish acres that you're taking care of.
We need seven people, yeah.
Yeah, so just...
Stop looking at the stats.
Guys are doing double the work or taking care of double the space, so just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Nancy.
Hi, T.
So this is just a really basic overview of some of the goals that I'm hoping to accomplish this year. First one is a huge project. Luckily, we received a grant for replacing our network infrastructure. So basically eliminating all hardware in-house and getting everything stored up on the cloud, which eliminates the need for hardware replacements, licensing, any capital requests for any of that type of thing. So it's all going to be just hosted in the cloud. And also, let's see, it enhances disaster recovery. We have additional firewall, which will have one on-premise, but also one in the cloud. We'll have backups at two different locations, one in Boston and one in Texas. And some additional tenants on the servers that are constantly logging, older abilities, any alerting, things like that. Really concentrating on security, security is key. Having everything off-premise just gives you a much more secure environment, so this is going to be a great, great opportunity. Likely we could get the funding for it, hopefully have it done by February next year. One of the next projects is linking our online maps to a few permit, which is the permitting for the building department. Currently, it's, you can go on and look for information on a parcel and get like property card information, the assessment, sketching, but we're going to have it so that it'll, it'll link directly into the permit also of the property from what the building department puts in, so it'll just be a one-stop for people to go and get all the information on a parcel. So it's going to... We've already started to work on it, but... The other is Civic Ready, so we're going to be using Civic Ready to replace Code Red. Our current hosting provider for the website, they offer this as a module. So it's newer, it's easier to use, it'll allow the public to sign up for emergency alerts, texting, landlines, cell phones, regional alerts if someone's in a certain area. It also ties in with FEMA for any weather alerts, things like that. So we're going to work on how to promote it to the citizens and through the PV. You guys are going to be using it internally. And we'll be using it internally for, if there's ever, you know, an announcement about a town meeting or things that we want to get across to the town, but not necessarily an emergency type thing, but we'll use it.
Right, perfect example is some of the prior meetings, like talking about Chaddock Street and the residents feel like they're not being able to be notified.
You can isolate them.
We can isolate that. So the key is, is we have to go and build that database. So we're going to do some kind of big campaign to try to get as many people signed up. So when there's an item on a select board agenda that we want to make sure that those people know about, you know, we can flip that switch, you can give them a text, we can shoot them a phone call, we can send them an email. So we hope that that helps to increase that transparency again with the residents that the board just certainly mentioned in prior meetings.
Yeah, it's in addition to signing up to receive like minutes and agendas.
Right.
That's a basic thing that we have through our website. This is a little bit more enhanced, reaching out to more people different ways. We just have to promote it. One of the other things, we're talking about training, so I was thinking of maybe having some training in-house. So I know it's hard to send people off to training or people don't want to look at the videos that we send because nobody ever really watches them. I thought maybe once, maybe once a month or see how it goes, having like a training here, the drop-in training for everybody. And we can be here and if you guys have questions on a certain application, whether it's, you know, Microsoft Office or MUNIS or whatever it is, and we can have people just stop in here and we can train them, quick 10 minutes if you want to see demonstration on something. So hoping to just kind of train in-house a little bit more on different things. I think that would be beneficial to everybody at your convenience, you know. The website, so we've been talking about a refresh for a while. Sort of been holding out too because we want to promote the Civic Ready at the same time and also Laserfish, which we signed a contract. And it allows for searchable records, searchable town meetings, searchable minutes. So we've been working on it in the background, so I think we're close to getting it out there. We're going to promote it all together as one big, hey, this is a refresh, these are the new features that we have. Getting departments to really take pride in their pages and really post, because all departments do their own. So just keeping the communications fresh, events, things like that. It's hard to get everyone to do it, it's not always a priority, but just trying to keep things new and fresh on the site. Well, replacing cameras, which we already actually did, so that's already one that's been done. And then the MUNIS upgrade, which is going to be huge, it's going to take a lot of... and then the Munis upgrade, which is gonna be huge, it's gonna take a lot of our time and. That could be pretty, but, so that's, that's it.
So, you mentioned security on the move to the cloud, I know, like, ransomware is a big deal with especially municipal governments, because, have you looked into, is there insurance? Is there, are there guarantees from these, these providers that say, we'll cover this much in damages or lost time or whatever?
Yeah, well, I mean, we have our insurance.
We have our insurance through my, that we have signed.
Yes, you do.
Yes.
Yes, yep. I think about a million dollars coverage, but yes.
And actually Nancy does a great job with training, and I'm sure the department is all speak to that, because we all get these emails, she contracts out with a company you know before, and we do phishing tests and so forth, then click on this link and...
Yeah, it's great.
And everybody hates it, and I'm like, you do it.
If you go in the bathrooms, you'll see that.
That's right, that's where I get trained.
Right. She has it hanging right there, so, she really does a good job, because that's really important that we.
No, I'm really, I'm really glad you're thinking about that, that's obviously.
It's not good when you get the fuzzy bunny.
It's obviously been a huge, huge problem for some places, like just devastating.
I think we're pretty good, I feel comfortable with what we have in place, I think we have a lot more than a lot of other communities do, we've got a response plan, an instant response plan, we've got all the security training, a lot of alerting, I think, I think we're at this point.
I got a couple of questions, relative to the View Permit, you're talking about bringing up property cards and things like that, does that communicate with Patriot?
Yeah.
It does, okay.
Yeah, it does now.
So that's what's part of the information from, okay, cool.
Yeah, right now, you'll see everything that the assessment put in on the property record card, that's already all in there, so the next step is just to get the permitting stuff to be the same.
Next question, a little tougher, switch over from Code Red to Civic Plus, Civic Ready, is that budget-neutral?
It's less, it's actually less, Code Red was, yeah, Code Red was pretty expensive, we, we piggybacked off Lake Water, and they are no longer using it either, and police department use it a lot, so this was a great solution, less money, easier to use.
Great. I was gonna ask you about the, the camera, because I was gonna ask Sam if they had cameras that could cover the area that you were looking to cover from the EHS side.
They did, so, we, we had kind of a blind spot over here, there were no cameras that took this part of the parking lot, the entrance over here, so we added a camera over there.
Where else are the blind spots?
Shh.
Asking for a friend.
Have you ever met a friend, ever?
Last question, this is a question not just for you, but for anybody else that has a police, fire, highway, inventory control and asset management, we don't do it, right?
We do it, well, there's three Munis, I think, do you mean for like fleet and, or just equipment?
Well, so, yeah.
Like a laptop or all the computers?
Well, I mean, that's part of it.
Oh, yeah, we definitely, we do that.
Okay, so that's great, but on a buyer scale, I'm talking about.
We have GPS on all the vehicles.
But we don't, we don't know what we have for inventory, so when we get a request that says, oh, we now have this 1992 vehicle that needs to be replaced, if we have that existing right now, we can kind of look forward based upon your information.
No, we do.
It's not just you, it's police, fire, because we keep, we keep getting all this equipment, and I know everybody else does this, but.
But like, we do ensure.
Every year, you could say, we need to replace the 1992 snow truck, and we'd say, oh, yeah, that sounds right.
Well, that, but we also hear from the public saying, you know, how much more new equipment do we need?
Well, I think, I don't see how inventory, inventory.
We've talked about it, since you and I have been on the board, we've talked about having that list, right?
Right, not to think we ever got that through the budget process, but I don't think that we ever did get a comprehensive list of that. Yeah, I agree.
We have that, we do go through it, and we can, Alicia and I were just talking about, we can incorporate that.
Well, it's accessible to us, I think it just, it's, it's a, I think it's a document that's important for us to have access to and be able to.
Yeah, especially during the budget process, yeah.
Do you want to put just vehicles or all fixed assets in the town?
I mean, we could, we could put a doll value on it, I guess, because it means mowers and, you know, whether it be TC, TC Duck Down, I said mowers.
A lot of that stuff should be on the buyer list, right?
Yeah.
Vehicles are here, and then the specialty equipment has its own category, that would be a mower and a hopper.
Yeah, we don't know that, we don't see that, so it's just, it's a matter of.
I don't.
So, we can get, yeah, okay.
On the website, Refresh, can you talk a little bit more about what you're hoping to do and how you're...
So, well, I'd love input, so that's, that's a part of your goal, that's great, too, just making things more accessible, probably a couple more tabs on the front page that go directly to pages.
Do you mean, what do you mean by accessible?
That's a loaded word in our field.
Well, like quick, some of the issues or complaints that we get is they can't find things very easily, so, maybe new, you know, additional tabs on the front of the homepage that can be directly to, whether it's reported concern, or, you know, how to pay something, or just, just quick, more quick tabs for people, that's, you know.
I'll volunteer my time to work with you.
That'd be awesome.
I'd volunteer my wife's time to work with you.
I'd love it, I'd love the input, you know, we get, oh, we wanna change, wanna change, but we don't really get a lot of details.
You didn't hear that, Katrina.
Matthew?
You want your questions?
You can go to that either. So, one quick thing is, the Select Board were saying different things about the website that, you know, they didn't like the way it looked, it didn't, wasn't easily accessible, and one of the things that Nancy and I had talked about, that there was all these comments about it, but never any feedback about it, and so we kept saying, well, what is it that you don't like about it, what is it that you find difficult about it? When we first, when it was first launched, we offered all of this training, but nobody ever took us up on the training, or took Nancy up on the training, and so that's what we said, like, if you wanna learn how to use the website, come on in, and it was always offered, but nobody ever came in and took Nancy up on the training, so it was like, if you want training, if you wanna learn how to use the website, come in and see how to use it, but nobody ever took her up on it, but then, you know.
I mean, we do have some, like, a few boards and committees that do actually have a login, and they do take care of their pages.
Yeah.
So, I'm Nancy, so, since I've been on the board, I know that Chase, that was one of his goals, was to update the website.
One of my goals.
One of your goals. One of my goals, I mean, I actually did put together a PowerPoint presentation, I presented to the Select Board, I think, last year, maybe the year before, that was really a comprehensive overview of the website and what, very specific about areas that we felt could be improved upon, so maybe we can revisit that document as a starting point.
Yeah, I have some of that included in the changes that I plan to do, so we can go over them.
Okay, yeah, all right, great.
Just for the record, I'm happy with the website.
Good.
The search tool is amazing, people just don't.
Yeah, when we get searchable, like, documents, it's gonna make a huge difference.
What'd you figure out?
What'd you figure out how to navigate it, it is very user-friendly, I just think a lot of people just don't understand, but there are areas I think that could be better, so we can not worry about that.
Great.
Sam Alvarez, Library Director. So, for services, in the past few months, we received a access for all grant from the state, that grant allows us to provide new technology and programming for the hearing originally impaired, so we'd like to continue working with that grant to purchase new technology. We've already purchased some technology that can be attached to computers, like large keyboards and device, and we're working on getting a hearing induction system in our second meeting room, we already have one in the large meeting, and that would allow patrons with cochlear implants to be able to hear better, any presenters, so, so we'll be working on finding more technology and working with EHS, we'll reach out to them to talk about what technology might be available, and Disability Commission, that's still new, we'd like to meet with the EHS as well to talk about it. Moving forward, we also wanna conduct patron surveys to assess what services we can add, evaluate our library hours, should we change our hours and stay Sunday hours, we don't, currently aren't open on Sundays, so we look at, maybe do something like that.
Maybe Mark's wife that works on this.
Yeah. So, you know, just increasing what we already do, increasing databases and online services and access to public media spaces. For staff, the staff job descriptions have not been updated in a very long time, so I'll be evaluating those and hopefully working with Michelle to do that, and just so that, you know, we make sure the staff have, are doing the best they can, and they ensure that the library skills are better for their staff or for them. We also wanna evaluate our promotional systems, how we market the library programming, our social media presence, the website, email, and library programming, I know you're already working on that, on creating a general calendar that we can work with the town to promote our programs there, and we also wanna work with OBE, we wanna collaborate with other town departments, we wanna work with Park and Rec, you know, EHS, all committees, and really figure out how the library can do service to all of them. Already, we're working with the Littleton Public Schools to...
You're done.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're working with the Littleton Public School System to, working with the Littleton Public Schools to promote our upcoming summer reading, and we're working with the Conservation Commission to Holinary Gardens, so, and we wanna reach out to other departments as well and figure out how we can collaborate with all of them. And for the building, we're working right now, closing our punch list, and we're going to be installing solar panels within the next few months, and we also wanna work on creating an annual maintenance task list to make sure that everything that's working right now will continue for five, 10 years from now, so, just making sure that our facilities' budget will, will meet the needs of the future library and make sure that it's working. From the Select Board, really what we need is help and maintain, you know, what that budget will be for the new building, Facilities Manager would be great if you could get someone like that, and also budget support.
I love this guy.
You get the gold star.
And budget support is our staff turnover, so we're anticipating some returns, a lot of my staff, they want to stay and see the new building, and they're sort of getting ready to retire their stuff, just reviewing how, what's staffing, we're working on a staffing plan for the next few years.
Couple of quick questions.
Sure.
So, can you just tell me very roughly how big the punch list is, and is Vertex managing, still managing like that, or the construction manager we had, helping with that?
Yes, so there's very small things that are still need to be addressed.
But not, it's not significant. And then, for the shared calendar, is this something that would link to the one on the website, is it a separate calendar, what's the vision?
Well, we wanna work with IT to, yeah.
We wanna get all the calendars to link into the, to the homepage calendar, so, it's one-stop, they can see everything, everything.
Just relative to the, you talking about facilities, not manager, but, as far as utility expenses and things like that, so, after, I'm sure you're tracking it, you're trying to figure out, I know Alicia is tracking it as well, but that's just something I'd say, keep an eye on it, especially as the solar panels are coming, keep an eye on it in 2022, this is when we were, non-electric and heat and all that kind of stuff, and then as a solar panel.
Alicia and I had this conversation a, a month or so ago to say, make sure that she's sending, I wanted to see the electric bills to the library, make sure the trustees see them, so that we can see if things are getting better in the gas bills, and, you know, if they're not, then we can call up Vertex and say, hey, something's still not configured right, you know.
Did they, did they come to look at the heating and has it changed, do you know? Has there been any improvement?
So, they did change the settings on the electric, and there's been some minor improvement, but I'm not, I'm not exactly, I haven't seen those yet, so.
Are you sure of your thinking?
I, I was just looking at the May bill for electric today, the new library, and it was over $2,000, so it wasn't showing improvement particularly yet, anyway.
Solar panels coming up.
And my home building department, I don't know how many pages you want me to read from, thank you for having us today, appreciate the opportunity. Earlier, Maran had spoke, and she was talking about all the stuff that was on her list, and I just really wanna support what she said and really advocate for staff and staffing in our department, an assistant town planner is something we desperately need upstairs, to assist Maran, I know I've said it before in other meetings and public meetings, but I have a chance to say in front of the rest of the staff, is that I know the benefit of having an assistant when we hired Mike Kenny, and I feel it's important that Maran gets that same support in her position, so, probably top priority, top goal in land use and building department would be to get the assistant town planner approved, you know, for fall funding, I think if, if the board's asking what they could do for departments, that's probably the biggest ask we have, the biggest need to fill. Obviously, we're moving forward with the consolidation of land use and building department, we've got the job description and approval from the Board of, the Select Board, and MOA coming from the Board of Health to you guys, for the public health coordinator and the public health nurse, so we're looking forward to posting those, and then we're also looking forward to our, our move to the first floor of the former library come July 1, you know, we'll at least be able to start the move with the findings available at that time, and then some other goals that we have set is, you know, simple, provide staff training for successful zoning enforcement, Chief and Liz both put out an email talking about coordinating a crisis intervention group, I'm really excited about getting that going because we seem to react instead of be proactive again, and I stole some language from the emails circulated, but complex cases are increasing, when it does happen, I get to organize the inspection team, you know, plumbing, electrical, and Board of Health agent, and we go out, you know, police and fire usually identify the, the crisis situation, and when we organize and go out, you know, my, my call to EHS is, oh, boy, what do we have now, you know, but they're always right there, and they stay the latest and the longest, and they do all the cleanup after we make the mess, so, kudos to them, but it is, it is, it is increasing, I think the pandemic proved, you know, a lot of people have significant needs that weren't being met, and we're trying to, to help now. We continue with our, you know, professional presence in town hall with our permitting process, and we spot appropriately in a timely manner with all applications, a new one that came since we all gave Joe his going-away present with the apple orchard, Anthony handed over some of the responsibilities to me, so, I put on, you know, as, as far as effort and coordination required, I put in as however long it takes, I'm the staff liaison for the committees and provide support for any other requests that come out of the TA's office currently, and will continue to do so until such time as it's directed or handed off to somebody else. I know that Park and Rec and DPW are coordinating with the tractor purchase and the mowing of the orchard, and I passed off some keys to individuals so that they can have access to the buildings up there. The other thing I got to pick up and I'm excited about is the projects and development meetings that Joe used to run, and I've listed that as a short-term goal, or as long as it takes until a new ATA is hired, or if it's assigned to me permanently, happy to take it on. As Nancy mentioned, the parcel GIS mapping integration with Open Gov and GIS is an exciting feature for us to have, so when we're talking to residents and/or applicants about what they're applying for, that they can see more information about the property, and also helps potential home buyers or, or commercial purchases, they can, they can get a lot more information a lot quicker, and will help with FOIA requests as well, because Diane and I are constantly coordinating on, on FOIA requests, the projects, you know, the parcel project is something that a lot of the department heads that are sitting in here work on, and, you know, it takes a lot of time and a lot of mapping and coloring, so, yeah, but it, it's an important project that we're working on, and I enjoy being a part of it, so it's a long-term goal, and then, last is the, some zoning bylaw updates, one of the things, again, going back to the crisis intervention, is junk and debris bylaw might be appropriate at this time, we're seeing the sprawl of boarding falling outside of the homes and into the yards, you know, it's not... You know, it's not, it's not fair to a butters to have their homes devalued because one person has an issue that they can't control. Well, I'm not saying it's their fault, but we should have a mechanism in place to help them bring it under control or at least make it appropriate viewing from the street, you know.
Work.
Thank you. Fence update by law, you know, we have some pretty stringent zoning bylaws that could be improved. Same with the shed by law for setbacks, accessory structures. You know, on a smaller lot, we make it pretty difficult for some people to have a shed and they shouldn't be penalized because they bought a quarter acre lot as opposed to a 40,000 acre, you know, 40,000 or one acre lot. And then the third rail in zoning is the sign by law. So, you know, at some point we'll tackle it, but it is definitely a long-term goal. Thank you.
I want to thank you for, I was struck by the flurry of crises that we, I've been informed of lately. It did seem like there was a cluster of them, but I think it's fantastic that you are coordinating and it's just, it's a good thing for the town all around, so thank you. I want to ask one question about number five, the permitting. Are you, are you saying in that that, you know, you're unable to provide professional presence at this time because of staffing or?
No, we want to continue to provide, we have the staffing currently. I think one of the joys in my department, and I mean it in all sincerity, is that the overlap that occurs at our front counter, Lucia who stepped up as our interim office coordinator for three days a week, but sometimes on Monday or Friday when she's not there, Amy's answering the phone or Amy's handling people at the counter, or Maran comes out of the office, or Mike's going up, or I'm going, and it's just, we have an idea of what everybody else has to do in their roles and I think it's great cross-training. We don't try to do other people's jobs, but we can certainly take the information in or get the information back to them in a timely manner because we can reach out to, Amy might be in the field, somebody comes in with a question, we can call her in the field and get that question answered. So the coordination consolidation of our department has been beneficial since I came in the door. I've really enjoyed it and we have a great staff upstairs and I want to make sure we're supporting each other and that's why I wish Maran was here, so she can hear me advocating for her, but assistant town planner is the role that we need to be. Thank you.
So Finance talked about the one, two, three system with the primary backup and break the glass. Are you implementing that as well then?
So we have it.
Oh, I'm like four or five.
Yeah. So, you know, as far as break the glass goes, I think if we get there, we're in trouble because we have an idea. Everything is so coordinated and overlaps so much in the permitting process that, you know, Mike Kenny's a great, he does a lot of the plan review and permit review and then sends it off and what it ends up in front of Amy or Jim Gurefi or Maran. You know, sometimes it's a no common need because they know that Mike's already looked at it or Mike has already provided them with a, hey, I looked at it, doesn't show up. What do you think? So it just goes and it flows really well. We're excited about having a public health coordinator in our office as well because when the crisis come up, you know, getting Jim to come, again, he's here for a few hours, you know, once or twice a week. He has come and we're grateful for the service when he's able to come, but he isn't always able to. He might have to follow up, you know, and go on at a later time, so when we have that individual in office, we'll be able to really approach it, you know, full force, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks for stepping up to the orchard stuff.
Yeah.
That's going to get everybody's.
Hi Bob.
Bob Connor, Fire Chief, thank you for having us here. So I put together a list with the deputy chief and Kim Kowbo, who works in the Finance Department now.
Great hire.
The first five, five items were really about establishing a foundation. I think the foundation at the Fire Department was sort of eroded over the last couple of years for a lot of reasons. I mean, we all have similar struggles with what happened with COVID and staffing and all that, and we're not exempt from that. We've had a few other challenges as well that have created some disturbance. So my goal is really to put some stops to that. So one of the things, the first thing is having an outside company come in to do policies and procedures, and I'll be presenting this on the 6th or the 27th for your approval. And it's a company Lexipol, which we can use to create industry standard, both national, state, and local policies, procedures, and guidelines, which will keep myself and the deputy out of the hot seat as far as people saying we're trying to implement things that are just based on our own agenda and they're also be with national consensus standards. So it really provides the best hazard mitigation and risk assessment or risk reduction for us and for the town. And really the cost of it for the offset is for us to put a committee together and pay overtime, the amount of time that it would take for us to hire a company is, is much less. And the training and everything that they provide is much more than we can do with what we have, so that's one of the big things. And then I have the NIOSH five in here, which has some, some stuff to do with fire ground and some stuff to do with staffing, has more to do with national standards as well. So I'm going to be, you know, looking over and it'll be in conjunction with Lexipol to see where we stand in conjunction with national standards for response, hazard mitigation, risk assessment, community risk reduction, those kind of things, and see where we stack up and what we need to meet the standard. If we're not, and if we are meeting the standard, what we can do to fortify our position there. We do have a couple of vacancies right now. I had a firefighter that I was planning to hire. We extended a job offer to him and he accepted a job elsewhere, so we're now opening that position. This will be the fourth time now that we've had to put this position out. We also are, I have put out the executive assistant vacancy. Yeah, so.
I'm feeling that for a couple of hours.
I do think it speaks to... I do think it speaks to the importance of having a business manager amongst the different departments because, you know, in this scenario, it really would be beneficial to have somebody that was cross-trained amongst the departments that in the short term could provide a service or if somebody was out. And if that cost was shared amongst the different departments, although the town pays the same, each department pays a little bit less, we're getting a lot more utility out of one person for the cross-training, so I think that that would be helpful. And then, and then just a reorganization, I kind of look at what's happened over the last year or so as if you have a storm, what's left on the beach is trash, seaweed, and maybe fish. And the seaweed and the fish belong in the ocean. They're close to where they are, just have to put them back. And then there's some trash that needs to be thrown away and some that has to be recycled and reused. So that's sort of the analogy I'm using for the Fire Department is that I think we're in a good place, we just have to look at where we're at and reassess and almost start over again and build fresh, so we're getting there. I've started working on the Community Emergency Response Plan with CERT. We started with shelter and that plan hasn't been updated in a long time, so we're doing that with CERT. So that's really no cost, that's just time that we're putting in and it's a way for us to engage the CERT team in inevitably things that they will be involved in, so they're going to play a heavy role in that. I did get final approval yesterday from Needs to establish an assistance dog program, so that's, that's going to happen. It's just a matter of anytime between now and two and a half to three years from now actually getting a dog because they have, limited amount of dogs because of COVID. So we're very much so looking forward to that for mental, mental health and wellness. A training program, again, staffing, which is a common thread here, I'd really like to see a training captain put in place there. It creates another layer of insulation from me having to be out on the floor doing things that, not that I'm above, but I could put my time into other administrative tasks that would be more beneficial than, you know, going on calls or having to fill overtime or the things that, that aren't getting done now because we're just limited in the office. Deputy Chief Clancy made a proposal before and said that we really need to build our management team before we can increase our staffing on the floor, and I think to some degree that's true, because if we increase our staffing but we don't have our stuff together in the office, how can we expect the people on the floor to do what they're supposed to do when, when we are, you know, not doing what we're supposed to do? So, you know, the training position would certainly help with that. And then the strategic plan, I haven't looked at it yet if there is one, but obviously developing a long-term strategic plan for both staffing apparatus, you know, all that stuff, and with the dynamics that are changing in the town, how the Fire Department fits into that, where we are now, where we need to be a few, a few years from now.
By name, actually, you mean like development and growth?
Yeah, yeah, growth and development. I mean, you know, the comment obviously is a big, is a big, big growth factor and just how that's going to impact us. I mean, we're already, you know, pretty maxed out as far as what we can handle with the staff that we have. So it might be that we add all that and it doesn't increase it that much, but we really need to look at other communities and what these projects have done for their call volume, their responses, their fire prevention, all that, so that we can make sure we stay ahead of it and not be reactive to it.
Really glad that you're focusing on the mental, mental health and wellness. That's important, I believe.
Yeah. We do have a program in place right now, you're just looking to go a little bit further than that, right?
For the mental health awareness?
Through EAP, right?
Yeah, so here's the problem with EAP and firefighters is that, and police officers the same way.
Yeah, you'll see.
Is that you say, we have this program and, and it's, it's open to you, you can make that phone call anytime, and they say, absolutely, I'm going to do that, and then they don't. And then things get lost in the wash and six months to a year from now, somebody has an event and from the public view, that person has done something wrong that they shouldn't do. From the internal view, there were cues that we may have missed internally that we could have stopped this months ago. So this is what this is for, especially the dog. The dog will pick up on these cues and it will be available to all the town departments, which will be really, I think it's going to be great. And, and I'm going to look at doing a critical attention and stress management proponent to that as well, so that we can be the first step for them, because a lot of times in-house, we can handle that stuff a lot faster and with more efficiency than if we bring some of the other.
I'm going to add number 10.
Okay.
Should be number one, but.
What's that?
Collective bargaining, so.
Yeah, well, that would have been like number one through 10.
So, thank you.
Okay.
Sid, do you have one? All right, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, here you go.
Matthew Baraj, Chief Police. Well, everybody knows that we have to deal with, police reform has come upon us very rapidly, very quickly, so one of our biggest goals is going to be looking through our policies, procedures, rules, and regulations and updating them. We are an accredited department. We just re-accredited in '21, but the re-accreditation comes in '23 September, which is, well, you're accredited, so it's easy, just flow with it. That's not true. Keeping up with the different changes that are going to happen very quickly through codes and the different policies and procedures we have to set in place for internal affairs and whatnot is going to cause a lot of administrative paperwork for us to be doing. So that's one of the goals that we're looking at. Town bylaws, I'm out of clerk, get myself, I've already started looking at some of the town bylaws that police are actually working on that haven't been updated since '72, '73, that, you know, with fines of $5 that need to be updated. We're going to try to meet on a monthly basis to, you know, pick apart one town bylaw that affects the police department and the town and how we can make some changes and suggest to the select board to adopt at that point in time. There are multiple that we need to look at. Again, the crisis intervention group, Ed already talked about it, we have our first meeting next Thursday. It's going to be, you know, a team effort for us to get this up and running, but, you know, everybody says, you know, Lily White, Littleton, and there's no complex cases here, but I think you'll see from the emails that you've been receiving that there are some serious complex cases in town that need the attention. And, you know, Ed spoke to it in regards to COVID really brought some mental health issues to the surface that we're now seeing. This is definitely going to be a collaborative effort between all the departments together. We do work very good, but again, it's a reactive place where we want to be proactive and try to get in there. We're implementing a new Wheels on Wheels program where the SRO on school vacations and on Don't Scream Break is actually going to work with the Wheels on Wheels program through Liz and go visit some of these homes and see, you know, where they are and whatnot. Hopefully he can get some feedback for us and then, I'm talking about dementia, I guess, right? We are working with the new program as well. It's a dementia program and a couple towns have already implemented the program and we're actually going to dovetail off of them to start this program. So in our in-house computer system, if we're looking for somebody, we already have pictures, we already have phone, we already have contacts, we already have clues as to where they may go, may not go. Very, it'll help our response a lot more rapid than it would not in the future. We're working closely with the District Attorney's Office and C4RJ. Ms. Napoli actually made me aware of an email in regards to a diversion program that was happening through our court that not a single police chief knew about, and we researched it and we're working with the DA's office and the grassroots organization, grassroots organization that we already work with, C4RJ, to see if we can come up with better outcomes for some of these miniscule crimes that have harmed the town or the community, but don't really necessarily meet the needs to go forward to a criminal case where we can try to solve it in, in the community within itself. We are working right now with COIN, Community Outreach Initiative Network, to form what's called a peer group for peer support for those crisis teams and the crisis intervention that we have come across. One of our big steps and goals this year is to work on, one, mental health and, two, physical health. If our officers and dispatchers and firefighters are not up to their A-game when they're on shift, both mentally and physically, then they should not be responding to try to fix someone else's problems. So we're really going to have a focus on mental and physical health this year. And the regional detective unit, we're, we're still in the beginning of stages. I know you signed the compact with the different law firms, but we are going to keep that going. It's just not a quick process where we just give the blessing and go with it, so it'll be a work in progress. Community policing efforts and events, during COVID, we really kind of went by the wayside, so for two years we haven't really done these. One of our biggest community policing events is Student Academy, and that will be happening this year. We have like 24 already signed up for, to attend it, so it's a good event. Open House Coffee with Coffee, Veterans Breakfast, these are all things that we kind of get away from during COVID. We couldn't really get together anymore and we're going to try to hopefully bring those back. Last but not least, the sewer problem coming down the pipe, we're going to need some detail officers and a couple towns around us in closer, further west have actually come up with a program that are called Traffic Constables, and it's unarmed traffic officers to work in conjunction with police officers for traffic control. We're going to look into that and explore the option of that, having that and the pros and cons before we swallow that bill. That's what we stand at the police department.
Can you go back to the program where you were, you said you had identification for people you were, you were trying to find?
Dementia.
Ah, dementia, thank you. I missed that word, okay, thank you.
That could also be expanded to autism or some other developmental disabilities.
And is this something they would opt into or their families would, would sign them up for, for example?
We have a sample letter you'll probably see within the next month after our first meeting that we're going to be sending out to like different families, hopefully through Littleton Electric, like in the water building.
To get all my ideas.
This is wonderful. That was before you told us. But yeah, this is something we, we talked about doing something similar to this, similar to the senior citizens and knowing them and having them in our system as to how we're going to work with them. But Liz came up with a great idea, is that to put in this into the building at Littleton Light Water.
You did something similar for kids.
Identification, yeah, identicats, which I haven't been done.
A long time.
Since I was a starter in the SRO.
Microchips, yeah.
Yeah, of course. So, thank you, Chief Bernard. So a few years ago, the Select Board had circulated policies and regulations in areas of the town code to all department personnel, and they had come back with comments about areas they felt were outdated or could be revised or whatnot. And I actually have a list that I recently circulated to the Select Board of comments that you had made, and that might pertain to what you and the town clerk are working on. So I don't know if you want me to send you a copy of that, just so you can see that, because you actually have gone through those documents and made comments about, about certain areas, so I'll send that to you.
Mark? I have a few, actually. Are you doing anything with the schools, given the current environment? They're not called out specifically as a goal?
Honestly, we're going to maintain what we've been doing. We have a good, I hate to say this because, you know, it's always kind of like the elephant in the room, but we have a really good grasp on our security and safety protocols for our schools. The SRO that's assigned to the schools is doing a great job. We are working with them looking stars in regards to our floor plans that will be updated. stars in regards to our floor plans that will be updated. We're just, we're down because ours were updated probably three or four years ago. So updating them on a yearly basis, besides contact information, floor plans pretty much stay the same. As far as the safety protocols and the policy procedures in place, our training is constantly being updated. And I sent you guys an email in regards to that. And that grant for, for the triad grant that we're working on right now, that'll bring a lot of more training, more frequent training to us.
So it might just be more that you need to do more publicity about what you're doing around the schools than actually doing more, but.
Yeah, it's a double-edged sword, though.
Yes, I know.
I don't want to say exactly what our safety protocols are.
Yeah, I know. Yes, I'm not suggesting that. You just, yeah. And I think this actually goes back to fire, too. There used to be like police explorers and fire explorers, and I don't think either are really active enough, or is the Student Academy now the police explorers? There's no fire explorers anymore, I don't believe.
We don't have police explorers. It was actually, it fell under the Boy Scouts and we weren't getting the turnout that we really needed for, for the demand of a weekly basis to meet and whatnot, as far as fire explorers.
Yeah, we haven't had that program for a while. And I hate to say.
It actually hasn't been that long, because my son was in it three years ago.
Yeah, I hate to say staffing, but, you know, to find people to dedicate their time when they have so many other obligations.
Yeah, I understand that, too. But I think those are good things to just, the community outreach and hitting the younger people in that. My last question to you is, there are signs up in my neighborhood that were put up back when, who was?
Joe.
Yeah, probably, you know, but, you know, we're a community policing neighborhood or whatever. Are we doing anything more with that anymore? Or are those signs are just? We used to have meetings a long time ago, you know, they brought the community together and said, you know, see something, say something type of things. And there's been no events about that in three police chiefs ago. So I don't know if we wanted to bring it back.
Yes. I hear you and I will make that work. But it is in place and it's typical, we hold an event like that for the public. It's the three or four people that show up to have a free cup of coffee and vent about something. That's personally going on with them at that point in time.
Yeah.
Not the broader picture where we should be talking about different neighborhood watches and whatnot. But yes, I hear loud and clear and I will work on that.
Thank you.
I have just pictured Mark in that uniform in the soul hand, return of the zodiac, what it was, community policing outfit.
Get your monos.
That would be awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
TC Beely, Cemetery Department. As always, our top goal is to provide funeral services for the families in need in a efficient and dignified way. We tend to get a lot of positive feedback on that from funeral directors and the families, but of course, complacency is important to work against getting complacent or lazy about that. So with that in mind, we always do that. And all the related record keeping that is involved with the funerals as well, it's important to not get complacent about any of that. So we strive to really pay attention. You know, it's hard sometimes when you feel like you've done something 88 million times. It's easy to, sort of feels like tying your shoes and you have to remind yourself, pay attention, go through this as if I would, as if I would expect somebody from my own family. We are very much looking forward to hiring an assistant cemetery superintendent. I find that'll be enormously helpful. As I hear a lot of the department saying, it's been, you know, treading water, it takes sometimes all you have just to tread water. So, you know, we definitely need somebody. So we're very much looking forward to that. We've got to get it through the rest of the procedure in terms of grade and class, and then we can post. So Michelle is, of course, very helpful in that. And we are developing a new section, a 50,000 square foot section for grave spaces. I expect, we haven't seen the plan yet from the landscape architects, but I expect we're going to gain 200 or 300 spaces from that. And that'll definitely buy us enough time, you know, a good eight or 10 years before we need to do another acre. So that would be great to have that. It's already in motion. It's probably, you know, a third of the way through. And we've got some equipment issues that will be down the road, but nothing's really a code red right now. If I remember correctly, we were approved for a new mowing trailer, which was probably the oldest thing we had, is the old mowing trailer. But, so that'll be nice. Oh, also, our Board of Commissioners does very well at getting us CPA funding, Community Preservation Act money, which we've done a lot at the older ground to restore old headstones and markers. And now they're moving into the oldest section at West Lawn. So Andrew Samarko in particular is very instrumental in that. He really knows how that works and he asserts himself to it very well. So that's good. And we plan to continue to maintain and look forward, look ahead at the building needs. There will be some stuff, the building was built in 1992, and nothing seems like a bad code red, but there's some stuff that's getting a little old that could be looked at. So we're looking forward to doing that. And we also have, a lot of the trees are old. So we're trying to figure out a plan to get a tree company to come in two, three times a year and thin out, just thin out the dead wood. And maybe if we deem a tree beyond health, we might need to take, do a takedown. That's basically the ones that are in high vegetation areas where it's obvious that it's just not safe for people to be walking around underneath it. And that would be the, basically the grounds for, okay, this one's a takedown rather than a trim up. And that is about it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I got a question. I think it was last year, a couple years, talked about a cremation area, alcohol or something. Is that, is there any more thought about how that's going to go?
Do you mean a cremation, an area for burial, cremation rooms, or do you mean a crematorium?
No, I can't remember. I know you were talking.
Was it the niche wall?
Yes.
We have, oh, we have the outdoor niche wall, and we also have some spaces left in the indoor niche wall.
Okay, so that's.
So, yeah, the outdoor niche wall, we finally got, there was spending freeze-up laws, everyone knows regarding to COVID. We finally got the patio surrounding it done, so it looks really nice.
Great.
So people are now, some people still don't really know what it is. They're like, "What is that thing?" And I'm like, "Well, it's an outdoor niche wall." And they're like, "Well, that's interesting."
What's that?
It's just spots where cremation rooms go down. And cremation being, it's moving forward in society. Massachusetts is one of the top three states in the country and we're at like 75% of people opt for cremation. Wow. Yeah, along with Maine and Hawaii. Hawaii, there's probably too many volcanoes to put up cemeteries. Do something else.
Joe Persis.
So you didn't actually properly kiss up to Ed and say, "You need the facilities manager."
Ed did come down and do an evaluation and he suggested a feasibility study to put together a plan for the issues that do need to be looked at. Some upgrades that should be done. Thank you very much.
Hopefully I don't have to sing. Michelle Bybert, Human Resources Director. I do want to thank Anthony for recommending this meeting be at 3:00 instead of having a night meeting in, to the board for adjusting your personal schedules to accommodate that. And thank you for doing that. So for the Human Resources Department, I've been told we have been on the 10-yard line of getting this bylaws for two years now. So a little over a week ago, I will say that we hit the 5-yard line. I have sent all of the information that is needed to the consultant, and they are working to put together the updated data from our comparable communities as well as updated data from the town of Littleton with new job descriptions, reclassifications, all of that. So they have all of that in hand. I'm waiting for a response from them on the timeline at this point, but I did want to give an update on that. We're almost there. We are still continuing, and this is going to be ongoing every year, to audit and reconcile the full suite of all of our benefits. That's just a constant task that needs to be done. It cannot be something that is left behind or forgotten about. You know, I think Bob spoke to the foundation, and that's your foundation in the Human Resources Department. So we cannot afford to let that slide. One of the biggest goals we have is in conjunction with the Finance and Treasury Department, and it is to work to create a system of checks and balances. Right now, we had two veterans, I'll call them, leave employment. And when you had that happen, a certain set of skills goes with that. And you try to maintain what they had, and it's very difficult if you don't have the same skill set they have. So what I'd like to set up with the Finance Department and Treasury Department is all the processes that we have, all the procedures that we have, a way that if somebody was to leave, kind of what Sean was talking about of that one, two, three system, they're able to just step in and pick it up instead of, "I don't even know what to do," or, "I have this skill set. Now we have to redo this process." We need a core foundation so we can just have people, if they do leave, walk in and continue those processes. So a lot of that is going to entail utilizing munis. A big thing we've learned this past week, the hard way, I'll say, is we need munis training. That's a big to-do. And it's as soon as possible. Because myself, I'll speak for my own department, myself and the benefits coordinator do not have the capability. We have not used munis to the capacity that we are currently. We have not created pay codes. We have not created just things on the backend that have tax implications. So not having that financial background is really a major portion of that that we need to pay attention to, because things can go awry, we'll say. So having that munis training will be instrumental in keeping us moving towards creating those processes and keeping things afloat for all of the departments, because it does impact each and every one of them. Another big portion of it is to utilize our employee self-service portal more. There are, in munis, in the employee self-service portal, there's a ton of different modules we could be using to make our processes better, to streamline them for all the departments, and we're not using them. We haven't been able to really tackle looking at them. We've kind of done maybe one or two, but there's so much more to it that we could be using. So ideally, that would be helpful to continue to look at that. We did complete, I spent, I was lucky enough, Alicia was so helpful in recommending, I'll call him a consultant, but he actually works for another town. He spent seven hours of his own time with me setting up our entire ACA reporting system, because we had that portion of munis, but it wasn't set up. So once you set it up, it does become easier every year. I will have to do a couple tweaks to it this year. But he spent seven hours of his own time. So thank you to Alicia for recommending him, because we have continued to utilize him. He is going to be helpful in setting up those processes with the Finance Department, with the Treasury Department, with HR. He's done payroll for 23 years in a municipality. So he has, and he used to be a computer software programmer. So he has the experience to help us. Look at the systems we're using, look at how we're set up, and make things better for us to use. This is a big goal, and everyone knows. We have nine positions right now that I need to post. They're either half-posted, or, I mean, it's a full-time job to do recruitment. So it's ongoing. I know I've been working with certain departments to continue that, but a big portion of that is not only posting for vacancies, but finalizing any reorganizations that were done over the last couple of years. The Building Department is a big one. I know that's been ongoing for a while. So again, we're kind of on that 10th yard line, and I'd like to get that over the yard line. So it's going to be working in conjunction with the Personnel Advisory Committee to continue grading the rest of the positions, getting the job descriptions done, and then bringing those to the select board for final approval, and then finally posting them and putting the gold star on them. And there are a couple other, Finance Department has a new position. Again, we're working with the PAC to get that over the finish line, too. We've done a lot of work on our internal controls, but like I said, there's still more to be done. And we will continue to work with the Finance and Treasury Department on that. We're working to implement new programs. So the town administrator had a great idea to do an opt-out program. We have a lot of issues, as you heard, with staffing, recruitment, retention. There's ways that we can be creative, where if we can't do the base salary, increasing that, increasing our budget, we have other creative benefits that we can offer employees that may not be as costly to the town or a cost savings to the town in order to attract people to stay here. So I'd like to take a look at what we do offer and what is out there, what we can offer, and just, like I said, be creative and work with the town administrator's office to come up with what that looks like for the town of Littleton to be the best town to work for.
When she says opt-out, that means health insurance. So if somebody doesn't take our plan, we could offer an incentive to not take our plan. Benefits both. It would put more money in the employee's pocket. It would save the town money from insurance coverage.
Thank you. So another thing I have heard from a lot of folks, not only that work here, but outside of here, I've read a lot of articles, flexibility is a big thing today when you become an employee somewhere. And I think over, especially over the last two years, people adjusted to working from home, not going into the office, going into the office a couple days a week. So we really need to take a look at our work from home policy and see where we can be flexible, where we can't. And again, what that looks like for the town. And I think I just have a couple more. This is the munis training. Oh, how did I forget this? More staff. We need more staff. I can't post all those nine jobs alone. I mean, the volume of work that is in the office just between benefits is one portion of that office. And you're constantly getting requests from not only employees, former employees, retirees, vendors. It's not just our current employees, and it's really demanding. You know, whether it's an emergency or not, it's an emergency to that person, and we really have to figure out how to accomplish that. So in recent discussions, myself and Anthony had spoken with the superintendent of the school, who is working with us to create a proposal to, we recently got approved to add a staff member, 19 hours. But the school department's going to work with us to see if we can make that 40 hours. So they've been in support of doing that.
And it's important to, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, like, we're over time.
We're right, yeah.
I want to be sensitive to people who need to leave. So I don't want to keep anyone here if they have obligations. I also don't want to give short shrift to the four remaining people who have not presented yet. So I'm open to suggestions on how to handle it.
John, five.
Five. I apologize.
Yeah, you five, please.
Yeah, we probably, we definitely have to wrap up in probably 15 minutes, because we have to plan for the planning board, and this room has to be set up for that. So we probably have time to.
Okay, okay.
Finish it off.
Sorry, I talked a lot. Sorry. Ask Anthony. But that's all I.
Okay, thank you.
Just real quick.
Donations.
I think we should recognize that individual, you didn't mention the name of the person from another town. Either we recognize one of us goes there and gives a certificate of acknowledgement at their, in front of their select board, or vice versa, a person maybe coming here and we recognize them for that. Because that's, that is a pretty big deal, seven hours. It's a full day, someone coming in and.
And we've continued to call him for issues that have come up, so.
Yeah, I'm going to jump in on a play on this one. So I'm, you know, proposing a contract with him, especially with, for your end.
His consultant?
Yeah, I, Alicia's worked with him. I've talked to him a little bit. I just don't want to run the meter and I want to operate in good faith so that when we do have to go to the wall, he's not like, "Oh, Littleton area code."
I haven't done that yet.
I know, I know.
Just want to be truthful.
That's exactly what I was going to follow up with, but Gary, getting, brought that part of it up. But if we need to get this guy on the clock, and that's going to help you to be able to design HR postings, and it's going to free you or Caitlin up to do other stuff than, that's something, we had talked about bringing somebody in back in December or January to give you some assistance. So I think that's what we need to do.
So it wouldn't be assistance for daily items or transactions, as you call them, but the, more so looking at the systems we have in place that are inside munis and seeing what's set up, and if we can set it up better to make it more. and seeing what's set up and if we can set it up better to make it more trick.
Hi, Liz Trudiac, Director of Elder and Human Services. I love this meeting. I have so many new ideas and so many things bouncing around in my brain right now, but.
Just don't tell Matt because he'll steal it.
I know. You'll say no, but Ed will jump on board.
I'm just surprised Mark Correy hasn't asked a single question. He's going to give kind of kimbals.
You have enough time to get to him, is that what you?
Hopefully not.
This is unbelievable, Mark. Thank you. New leaf.
Promised him chocolate.
Okay, so my first goal for this fiscal year and next, hopefully not too far after that, is to move the EHS building across the finish line, get this building built, make it a great destination spot for people to come. Not only for senior center activities, but for community events, for outreach services, for veteran services, and whatever else we can assist people with. And along with that is also keeping the neighborhood informed, keeping the public informed of all the new steps that we're taking, where we are in the project. We're kind of at a lull right now while L L B is doing their thing. But keeping the website updated, making sure that all the information is current on that project. Second goal is to keep up the balance of our programming between virtual programming, hybrid programming, and in-person programs. We still haven't seen a full rebound to the numbers that we had pre-COVID. But it is coming back up slowly. We're offering programs in every format that we can right now. Third goal is to rebuild our in-person congregate dining. Pre-COVID, we served lunch in the diner every day. I would say the past five to 10 years statewide, congregate meals have gone down significantly. Nobody wants to attend them. It's just not something that is appealing to people anymore. So coming up with a way to revitalize the program, serve a different meal, serve breakfast instead of lunch, coming up with something a little different. We've revitalized our women's breakfast, our men's breakfast, and we've had great turnout, up to about 25 people for some of those breakfast meals. And we've brought back our Thursday soup and sandwich meal, which isn't your typical Meals on Wheels catered meal that you would typically receive on a lunch day. But it is home-cooked by Gail Dolan, our kitchen manager. But it still falls within the sodium guidelines and all of that good stuff. So revitalizing the lunch program. Fourth goal is to revamp the Senior Tax Work Off Program, which is in progress and moving forward. And I've had a lot of help from Alicia and from Sean and from Kathy Miller to kind of push this forward, especially recently. So hopefully, moving forward, that we can make the program more manageable for staff, but also be of bigger benefit to the residents who participate and to all the department heads in this room who need more staff. And we have a pool of staff to pull from, just matching the skill sets. So increasing the abatement amount, increasing the hour amount, increasing the overlay amount, and coming up with some new creative job placements. So I'll be tapping into everyone here to give me some job placements, but really specific tasks. Really like, I need mowing or weed whacking at this location these days, and I can probably find somebody out of our pool of 100 people. But something specific. And then last on the list was increase the awareness of Elder and Human Services, not just us as a department, but what we offer besides the senior center activities, the whole outreach human services portion that we do under 60. And part of increasing that awareness is working with my colleagues here to implement these new programs in the community and intervene in some of the situations before they become a crisis and get our outreach workers in there before it gets to the boiling point. So if we can make people aware of what we can offer them before it becomes a crisis, I think it would help all of us in this room. So then also want to add in Strategic Marketing Plan, revamp our logo, do a whole new look, modernize us a little bit. But that's just part of the goal.
Thank you.
I think it's a great idea if we can figure out how to use the tax write-off for people to do the mowing or the maintenance of conservation lands or things like that. That would be a good.
We already have several people who are doing that.
If we can figure out better how to do that and take some of the burden off of the hiring of some of the other.
I think the increase in the amount of the abatement and the length of the program and the amount of hours you can do, that increasing might entice some new workers into the program who might have a different skill set or be recently retired, who can do some of these tasks that in the past, we haven't found a good match for the skill set yet. So I'm hopeful that this will be really successful. And thank you.
We've identified that we can go up to, Gary, what did you say?
Have you spoken to the Friends of the Library, Library Trustees about fundraising for the senior center?
I have not, no. I know Holly Stewart, the President of the Friends of the Council on Aging, made some sort of connection.
It's an ongoing thing in the background.
Okay, good, good. Can we name a room after Ed from Ed Sweeties?
I would love that.
That's my only request. Cindy, do you have anything?
Nope, I'm all set.
Great, thank you so much. Diane?
Probably not call it the waiting room.
Well, maybe we do.
The men's room.
There it is.
Thank you. Mayne Correy, Town Clerk. So the Town Clerk's Office is governed by mass general law. It's black and white. There's no gray area. Elections, town meetings, for your request, must be done according to the law, to just to name a few. Setting goals is one thing, but abiding by the law must be in the forefront of the clerk's office. The Town Clerk, the Town Clerk's Office must stay impartial and treat everyone with respect that walks through the door and calls on the phone. So one of the goals that I have is continuing training for Kim for all aspects of the Town Clerk's Office. Elections enabling the office to run more efficiently. Bringing in state or equivalent for training for our boards and committees, such as open meeting law and ethics training. That's one of the key things that I'd like to do because people are constantly asking me about, you know, open meeting laws and if there are violations on certain things, something that's happened at a meeting. So I think that that's kind of important, especially with a lot of the new boards and committees. There's a lot of new people on a lot of them. Working with the Town Administrator's Office to create a welcome package for board members. Basically, what that is, is to explain to the different board members, what does the chairman do? What does clerk do? What does the vice chair do? Working closely with IT on the website and keeping up with items that need updating on a more regular basis that affect not just the clerk's page or office, but with residents and voters. Looking to try and streamline processes in the clerk's office. Though most everything is online, people still find it necessary to come in. We want them to feel comfortable doing things from their home. There are some things that they still do have to commit if they are looking, obviously, to apply for a marriage license, that has to be done in the office. But there are other things that they can do from their home that they still commit to the office because they just feel comfortable doing it. But we want them to be able to feel comfortable doing it from their homes. We have two state elections and early voting coming up. The clerk's office will be working with all departments to ensure that impact on them is minimal and disruption of classes is held to a minimal or as minimal as possible. Looking for voter ease of access to the building, such as signage and more volunteers. We are looking to purchase new signs. So we've got some signs, I don't know if you can see them, but they're a lot larger. They're about six foot that will go at the different entrances. Because most of the signs that we had before were just small, little signs that people were walking to the, all the different doors and couldn't figure out how to get into the building or where their precincts were. And these signs will be able to be transitioned to the polls. So from now on, when you go to the actual polls, these signs will be at the polls as well. And we're also looking to explore ways to increase voter participation.
You remind me of an idea, but a kiosk in the hallway outside of your office, a touch dream kiosk that you would be able to direct someone to, they could go right online and do some of the things that you just said. Once they know, then they're going to tell somebody else. I don't know.
Put you right on the counter.
Talk about, yeah, something that's.
There is one on the counter. I just don't think anybody would be using it. I mean, maybe educating more for sure and encouraging that more. But there is, there is one on the counter for people.
Get a big DIY sign with an arrow.
Because we have one, too, and you need to go over and show them.
Yeah.
Well, see, I didn't know. There you go.
I didn't know, either. So you actually reminded me one of my goals for the IT department would be like, I think all board members on all boards should be able to have a Littleton MA or equivalent email address. Because it would be better just to separate out your personal email from everything else. So I don't know what we need to do to make that happen.
Yeah, I mean, we discussed that there are a lot of boards that already have that. As they come and request it, we provide that. There's a cost associated with it. That's why we wouldn't want to do it to every board member. But, and then there's the open meeting law issue. So there's things that we would have to address. But, you know, we come up with an agreement for it.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. So I think this is when Nina was here. We did, as a board, come up with like a welcome package for the boards and committees that we appoint, but it just kind of got put by the wayside for whatever reason. So I'll share that with both you and Anthony, just so you can see what we have put together at that time to see.
Do you know if there are any like state resources or other places where you might be able to find something that's the skeleton of that? Of that kind of a training packet or a welcome, a welcome packet?
So the state does have some information that tells you what each member is kind of responsible for, their roles. But as far as a welcome package, there really isn't anything like that.
I have one other. Is there any push or long-term goal to like, take all of the old records and put them online so we don't need the storage cabinets of old things around?
Nancy mentioned earlier laser features. That's their electronic records management, and that would be searchable and so that's.
But that's everything going back to the beginning of time?
It's just labor intensive. So maybe we'll tap into some of those senior tax work folks to help us.
Thank you.
Mark Correy, Executive Director, L C T V. I also, like Liz, love to listen to everybody and realize how underworked and overpaid I am. Thank you for that. So you can look at my goals here. They're pretty much the same every year, with the exception of buying new pieces of equipment here and there. Or outfitting different rooms with robotic cameras that we have to plan on. But the big thing, I think, number two, just what I wanted to take a second to give you a heads up, is that for the FY '24 budget, I would like to look, along with Alicia, at having some of the towns start to subsidize some of our expenses. Mostly, we'll start with just the benefits portion. L C T V and the funding that we get is diminishing. As people cut the cord and find other means to get entertainment, you know, our funding goes down. And we still think we're a valuable asset for the town. And hopefully, like Park and Rec, you know, you'll see the value of what we provide and be able to at least start to pick up some of the expenses that we think that we can still be self-sustaining if, like, we start with the benefits portion. Because that's about $60,000 a year. But anyway, that's something to look at for FY '24. And we just enjoy what we do. And we enjoy helping other town departments get the word out or do a show. Or, you know, even sometimes, a lot of times, we end up just being photographers and for different events, you know, just to archive it. It doesn't even get on the air. It's just more for like, the town reporter, some publicity. I'll stop there.
I know you came, you presented a year ago, or perhaps two, and said, we have this, we have Kitty here that we're going to start dipping into because we can't afford benefits anymore. And we have about a year or two left before we have to start asking for money. So you were right on. Not unexpected. Any comments, Gary? Questions?
John Bill?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mark, what is the plan for recruiting to try to get some more vendors to do the meetings?
Well, just get the word out. Yeah, that's it. Just get the word out. You know, a lot of times, I'm doing a cable camp this summer with the Park and Rec, which we've never done before. So the target range is 12 to 17. I'm not sure how that would work out for video vendors because meetings, you know, sometimes kids have to be done by a certain time, 10 o'clock or whatever it is. But those might be kids that are interested during college age to come back. Or they may know an older brother or sister or something, you know. It all starts with just getting the word out.
Mark, could that be posted on like opportunities? Opportunities is just an ongoing, is that something? Because a lot of people go to this site, even if it's just ongoing, you know, contract.
Yeah.
And that's what Michelle mentioned earlier, as far as accommodating people's needs more, working at home. Can we set up your cameras so they can be remote? So vendors can actually do their job with a laptop at their house?
A lot of them do right now. For all the meetings that still meet virtually.
Virtually.
We have vendors that would, which were not a lot of the more important boards. I don't mean to lessen the importance of boards and committees. But, you know, permanent municipal building committee doesn't need one of our staff people. We just have a vendor to come on or something. Because they're quick meetings, but.
Just a quick question, too. As I think, aren't they going to vote then in like July to see if they're still allowed for?
Yeah, that'll pass.
Yeah, hopefully.
Just looking at the numbers is cool.
Yeah, that's what I heard, too, that it might be extended.
Is the Senate meeting right now? It would extend until December of '23.
I did have a question on townwide, a townwide system for scheduling conference rooms as we get bigger and talking about a library, potential space in the senior center, maybe for that. Is there any discussion of something that?
Yeah, Diane and I have had conversations. And I've reached out to most of the boards, either the representatives of those, just to feel about, you know, how they feel about moving into different locations and are they set on that night, you know? And trying, we've got a little grid of our own. The L C T V has put together just so that we can visualize it because we're all visual learners. And so we can see how it's all laid up. But we're going to, you know, we're always looking at stuff like.
Well, if you need, I'm just thinking a reservation system where the police station, the fire station, all these where if you need, if you need something from us to get that moving, where we, there's a reservation system in place and we need the towns. These are all municipal buildings. We should be able to access. You should be able to access that, the reservation system, without any trouble.
Well, what we do now is, you know, we know that certain committees meet the second and fourth Tuesday, Tuesdays of every month. So we try to put those on the calendar already. People meet on the first and third.
The Select Board, Finance Committee.
You know, that type of thing. So that's when, when people start changing that, then that's when the issues start happening. It's because, you know, we've got it on the, we've got it on the calendar, we've got it changed. But then all of a sudden, such as Finance Committee changes.
No names.
We're saying Finance Committee, changes, you know, midstream. So now, instead of meeting the second and fourth. meeting the second and fourth Tuesday of this month, they change to once this month. And so we've taken that out of there, and now it opens, it opens up, but they're still only meeting by Zoom, but it's still, it changes everything, you know, but we still have to enable, you know, cable to be able to-
Well, statutory laws like that, I'm just saying in general, to have a reservation system where if that happened, you could see that there's an opening at the police station on that night or something.
Well, we can do that through the website. We all have our own calendars, like the police station. Each room has its calendar, so we can view that on the inside.
You can?
Yeah. We can look, and actually, you can too.
Yeah.
You can see everything that's scheduled.
So I have a question. Doesn't Civics Plus have a system where I could go in and I can log into my Civics Plus account and I can select a room and see if it's available or not and request a reservation and someone approves it?
We, well, we can, but-
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes. So the difference, the difference is reserving the room internally or reserve it for a meeting that has to get, there's a lot of things. Yes, we can definitely work with what we have.
The thing is, is that most people don't look at the calendar properly. You're only looking at the calendar and seeing what you see, but you have to look at it as all events. Because if you don't look at it as all upcoming events, you're not seeing the entire calendar. You're not seeing everything that's out there. You're only seeing a certain amount, such as today's, today's meeting. If you don't look at all upcoming events, you didn't see today's, today's meeting. Unless you looked at all upcoming events. So people didn't think it was happening unless you saw, you looked at it as all upcoming events. So you have to look at it properly.
Just cut you off.
I have two before. One is, is it possible to train event, the senior tax work off as vendors?
I just sent Mark an email about it.
And number two is, one we've talked about before is like, I think we should, there should be a goal to make all meetings recorded, whether they're minor boards or not, whether, and like we talked about using owls or something like that and training people on that to do it without staff. So we should see if that's possible. It's not that, not to use more staff, but it's like, you know, just to pick on like the bicycle and pedestrian committee, right? They meet and they don't get the publicity of all the other meetings, and they're an important group too. So the only way you know what's going on is either attend their meetings or read their minutes, whereas if there was a video of it, you could actually technically, you know, participate afterwards. And I don't want to put more work on the staff-
Correct. If there's a way to do it, just to, you know, just like any resident can submit a show to air.
Yes.
You know, give me your finished product. We'd love to hear it.
So, yes. So we should figure out how to enable that more than, that's what I'm thinking. And, you know, it doesn't have to be fancy with all the graphics and stuff.
I just want to get to Kathy.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Charlie.
What?
Kathy Miller, Chief Assessor. And I'll be quick. The main goal for the assessor's office is the quality manual. And this is important because we've had a lot of turnover in the assessor's office. The quality manual is a guidebook for when you're out in the field, and it's really important as I have new members in the office going out in the field and doing measure and listing, to have an adequate quality manual. Furthermore, the Department of Revenue, every year, and a lot of people don't realize this, give me directives. So every time the tax rate gets certified, my DOR rep gives me directives. So I have my own personal goals, but I also have goals that are given to me. One of the goals from the Department of Revenue was actually the quality manual. They felt ours was dated and with such an increase in real estate and homes in Littleton, they felt it could be dated. So I'm about 95% confident on that. The other thing is cyclical inspectors. So DOR actually reached out to me last week, and she is going to be coming out at the end of the summer, and she wants to see that there's a presence out in the field. She wants to make sure that we're caught up, and the goal is to have every house in Littleton should be activated every nine years. And so she wants to see where we are in this goal. We are a little bit behind, I'll be honest, because of COVID. We were reluctant to go out into the field. We did some reviews. I was going out for permits and sales, but not just cold calls. It's one thing during COVID, if the homeowner expects you coming in, they took out a permit, they know you're coming. And it's another thing just to be out in the field knocking on doors. We felt like giving people fear, it was inappropriate. So we are catching up, and Brendan's been out in the field every day. April, I am training. She's the new Assistant Assessor, and I've been training her throughout the field. We took two days last week, and she shadowed me, and we did a bunch of permits. We did some syphicals. So once I get April out there, I think we'll be able to better get caught up. I won't go into the senior workup program because I feel like Liz touched base on that. And that's pretty much it. We're increasing the hours, and I won't really get too much into that. The other one that the DOR really wanted me to work on is revamping neighborhoods. And what that means, and I mean, it's kind of boring to everybody, but we have neighborhoods in town, one through eight, and each one represents a different type of neighborhood, from neighborhood one being waterfront properties, two is water view, three are any homes that are on the rail, I mean, on the train, they're on Great Road or Foster, high-traffic areas. But they felt like our neighborhoods four through six needed some updating, and we should be able to identify each neighborhood by characteristics, whether it's underground utilities, sidewalk locks, cul-de-sacs, whether it's congestion, whether it's, you know, lot size. So I am working on that currently, and that's, that's a big goal in the office, actually. I'm working on GIS. We have some parcels that are linking up to GIS correctly, and so I just started looking into that. And obviously, there's new growth. I did not put new growth on there, but that's always on my goal list. That's more personal goal. I'm trying to tackle some of DOR goals first because it impacts us getting our tax rate. So that pretty much sums it up.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, here we go.
You can go that way?
They could pick you up. You can start. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I want to thank you personally for helping me understand some of the-
John Borowski Live.
Thank you, John Borowski, Veterans Agent. I'll be very quick. My main goal is to increase the training that I've been getting. I don't want to get a lot of it every year. Next two weeks, I've got seven days of training. So it's been, it's been crazy. But the other thing is, I understand there's over 200 names that were missed on Memorial at the Commons, so I think we need to think about doing something for that. If I can verify them all and see if we can get something going with that for the next couple of years. And also, I need, I need some type of help to digitize my, my maps of the veterans' graves of the cemetery. I've been doing it by Excel, and I need to, I need a better way of doing it. So I have just got to figure out how to do it.
John, I can work with you on that.
I'm sorry?
I can work with you on that.
Okay. Thanks, thanks. Also, I have another guy that, one of the Cub Scouts guys or a veteran that's also, he's trying to get a, one of his interns to do an app for it, where we can find it very easily. But it's, we'll get it done. It helps when we're doing the flag and just, and other things. But other than that, I'm, you know-
Thank you.
Get some way to get more veterans out on the parade service and other activities.
Thanks for organizing Memorial Day Parade as well.
Thank you. Thank you for showing up.
Thanks all of you. I really, we all really appreciate this, this info. It's very valuable. And thanks for staying a little late. We're just, it's impossible for us to stay on schedule, I guess. All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Anybody want to stick around? I'll shut up the room. Feel free.